We'll call this meeting to order, the Planning Commission Lathrop Village for Tuesday, April 19. So I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sorry, I'm on the wrong, yeah, I'm on the wrong page.
May 17.
May 17. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll call for roll call.
Chair.
Here.
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 Commissioner Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you.
Chair, if I may, I literally just got a email from Commissioner Hicks, he will not be attending.
Could you repeat that, please?
Commissioner Hicks will not be attending, I just got an email from him, he is, he just got back into town.
All right, I'll make a motion to excuse Commissioner Hicks.
Second.
Those in favor? I. opposed? Are you none? Motion granted to excuse Commissioner Hicks. We'll move on to approval of the agenda, as it's written. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Those in favor? I oppose. None? So the agenda has been approved for this evening.
So one note on the roll call from last month. My name is spelled incorrectly, I don't know if that needs to be spelled correctly.
Yeah, we should be making corrections in the next.
And also, I am a commissioner for this meeting too, I think, so I am here.
Oh.
It's okay.
No big deal.
The record show. Okay, so we'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes for the regular meeting of April 19.
There are two corrections on the meeting minutes. One is correctly spelling Robert Tamrely's name on the first page, which is page two of our agenda packet. And then on page three of our agenda packet, under item six A, the last sentence refers to off-site parking, it's actually should be off-street parking. Section 5.13 of the zoning ordinance is for off-street parking.
Okay, so there are no other modifications, corrections to the meeting minutes? We'll entertain a motion to approve them as the written or approve them as proposed to be modified?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of April 19 with the two edits that I suggested.
If those in favor? I oppose. So meeting minutes have been approved. So we'll move on to item five on the agenda, which is the public comment. Public comment is for discussion or items to address to the commission that are not part of the agenda for this evening. And speakers are limited to three minutes. So if we have any public comments at this time, whether in person or online, we'll entertain that right now. Hearing none and seeing none in the room here, we'll, we'll close that and move on to new business. And start off with the public hearing planned unit development for 2777 Southfield Road. Nara Bread.
Good evening, planning commissioners, Jill Bane with Gipps Webster. I, if I could allow, if I could be allowed to share my screen, I will share that and I will put up the site plan for this project. But mostly for the benefit of the folks who are here with us in person and any that may be online. Here we go, oops. Just working on getting the permission to do this. While we're waiting, I'll introduce this project by framing where it is for, oh, there we go. And there, all right, we can see. So the subject property is 2777 Southfield Road. This is on the corner of Sunset Boulevard and Southfield Road on the southwest corner. Currently, there is a bank with drive-through structure attached to it. The bank has been closed and unused for some time, I think, at least a couple of years. The applicants have proposed to take down that building and construct a new restaurant with a drive-through. And that use is not permitted in the Village Center District where this is located. The ordinance, though, does allow a provision for an alternative development review tool called a planned unit development. And under the planned unit development, the applicant is able to ask for some flexibility in the application of the zoning ordinance in exchange for being able to develop a project that wouldn't normally be able to be developed under the current zoning standards, but may advance some other goals of the city. So what we have here is a building roughly in a very similar loco. Oh, that's not me. Someone's got a little box up on the screen there, thank you. We have a building roughly in the same location as the existing building with some modification with parking in the front along Southfield Road and along Sunset Boulevard with a parallel set of drive-through lanes. One, as we understood from our presentation last month by the applicant, to serve drive-through customers, the other lane for people who've ordered ahead and will be going through the line in a more quick fashion to pick up the food that they've already ordered. I will go through our letter. And I guess, first, I guess I can go through the process a little bit for the benefit of those who are here who weren't with us last time. The process for a planned unit development is very similar to that of a rezoning, where the Planning Commission hears the case from the applicant. Planning Commission holds a public hearing, listens to feedback, has dialogue with the applicant, and then makes a determination, which is a recommendation to city council. City council then would take final action on the planned unit development approval or denial. And with the additional step, that is different from a rezoning, in which the city would enter into a development agreement or contract with the applicant, where all parties will agree to the conditions that Planning Commission and through the city council may attach to the development of this property. That becomes a legal document, a binding document for the applicant that has to build what they said they were going to build, or they have to go through the whole process all over again. So it is an interesting opportunity for the city to have a little bit more influence over a development than they normally would under a straight zoning request, site plan review, or even especially land use. With that said, we would go through the summary of the items that we feel are appropriate for Planning Commission discussion, and those are on pages three and four of the letter that we sent out last week. These really go to the outstanding items or the items that we feel we would wanted to highlight for conversation by the planning commission. So we would note, we have a number of items here, nine items, I'm not going to read them all in detail. But essentially, for the intent, we're kind of tracking our way through the PUD process, and these are elements that are included in the zoning ordinance. So the PUD plan proposed by the applicant proposes a restaurant use, which is consistent with the Village Center District and the city's master plan. The drive-through component, though, does not align with the zoning ordinance or the future land use as provided in the master plan. The Planning Commission at our meeting on April 19 did approve the applicant's criteria for qualifications to allow that project to move forward to the next level. That did not convey an approval of the overall project, but did give, I think, the applicant some good feedback and direction for them to return. The uses are, in this case, there's one use, it's a restaurant with a drive-through. Again, permitted in the Village Center District, but the drive-through does depart from the ordinance standards with respect to setbacks, parking, and somewhat of design, but we'll get to that in a minute. The purpose of the Village Center District is evidenced in, and I think I can share, I do, oops, not that one. I guess I don't have that letter up. If we look at the area that's framed by the sunset in California with Southfield Road running through it, the Village Center District, the idea there that's been in place in the city since 2009, articulated in that master plan and then affirmed in 2015 and most recently in 2021, is to create a vibrant, commercial, mixed-use corridor, a walkable district that would serve as the center of the community. With that, the zoning ordinance was amended in 2011 to create those standards that would reinforce that vision. So buildings set up closer to the street, parking in the rear, ample windows for views of into the uses that are proposed along the area, multi-stories with a mix of use, active uses on the ground floor with residential or office uses up above. That's the overall intent of the Village Center District. And as you know, we haven't had any development to date that has gone through that process and has had those standards applied to it for development. This project does not do that either, in that it is setback, it has parking on both sides, and it has the drive-through use. So just looking at it from that perspective, thinking about walkability and pedestrian-friendly nature of it, we would say that that's contrary to what the master plan suggests and what the zoning ordinance suggests. However, I think there are some other things to be concerned, to consider. Going through the rest of the letter, I think some of the things that we would like confirmation from the applicant, and I think through a conversation that you may have with them tonight about parking, confirming the location of functional elements, looking at the location of the dumpster in that northwest corner of the site, right adjacent to Sunset Boulevard. Landscaping, we just note that we didn't have a landscape or lighting plan submitted with this proposal, and that's not really a cause for too much concern. Should this project go forward and be approved, you will see it again following the adoption or approval of that development agreement through final site plan. At that point, it's pretty straightforward of a review process. Planning Commission will essentially be confirming that the site plan that's submitted is in keeping with the conditions that are imposed in the development agreement. And at that time, we can look more closely at landscaping and lighting and some of the other elements that are part of the site plan review. I think that's essentially what I wanted to provide as an overview with saying that the concept, and I sort of summarized this in the letter too, the concept presented by the applicant is out of alignment with some of the master plan overall goals and the zoning standards. And so Planning Commission is asked to consider whether the trade-offs of that are worth of additional benefits that the applicant may be bringing to this project. And again, we can go, we can look at some of those concepts again. Oops, I thought that was the one that had your graphics in it. Well, I'll find that, anyway, we have this one. Some of the things that we talked about last time with the applicant, the applicant presented a project of a building of high caliber design, high-quality materials. Their business plan that includes the drive-through but does not have that as their predominant portion of their business, their service to the community as that third place, that collective meeting area. And interestingly, because we know that that's true, because we have one across the street, and it's been there for a number of years and serving in that capacity. And so we would expect to see that continue. So those are some of the things that we talked about last time. I think it'd be good to hear back and forth again if there've been any other additional thoughts from the applicant and additional thoughts from the planning commission about other criteria that you may wish to consider. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions before you go to public hearing or after. I'll be here.
Okay. Any thoughts, questions, anything from the commission that we would like to ask or consider or?
At this point, I think I have some items, but we can, we'll discuss them in the next agenda.
Okay. All right, well, if there's none, and there's no additional words from the applicant at this point, we'll take comments from the public. Yep, open the public hearing. Yes, so you can speak into the microphone and give your name, address. Three minutes to address.
My name is Oscar Dixon, 27711 Eldorado Place, which is directly behind the proposed site. My first question is, are they moving the current Panera's from the current location to the corner? Have they moved in that restaurant?
My understanding is that that's correct, that it's a proposed relocation from their existing facility to this new site.
Okay, the drive-through that they're proposing at this new location, understand the traffic is going to come off of Sunset into the property, is that correct? That's what it looks like.
From the, we don't have a final site plan review for that, but the current plan does indicate so just as the entrance is currently there for the bank.
Okay, that poses a problem, because if that drive-through is there, the overflow is going to end up on our street. And that's not acceptable.
Okay.
There's no other place for it to go. But if it loops around, if it gets crowded, it's going to end up on the other lot of place. And we're going to end up with cars landing up in front of our house.
Okay, that's a valid concern, something for us to, that we can later discuss with the applicant or give them an opportunity to respond to.
Okay, are they intending on increasing the space in that parking lot and going back toward Eldorado Place? Are they making the parking lot bigger? Is that the proposal?
At this point, it's not clear that they are. In other words, I don't believe the intent is to encroach into that green space, but that would be something that needs to be looked at more closely on the plan itself.
Okay, because they did that on the other side. They increased the parking lot behind the fettuccine. And no one uses that parking space, that was a total waste to increase that space. And they took down their trees and that was just, the only people who use that space now are people who come there after work and make out.
I hadn't heard that, but, but.
You know, and you may think it's funny.
No.
I don't think that's funny at all.
No, I, no.
If you had to live there and watch people have sex in front of your house at five o'clock, you wouldn't be laughing. Not at all, that's not funny.
No, I understand. I understand that.
And again, you don't live there. If you live there, you wouldn't think that's funny. Because I don't appreciate that. But anyway, another thing is Panera's, they do not control their dumpsters. If you come and sit there and watch their parking lot, you can see these squirrels go into their parking lot, get that bread and all that, the other stuff, it's in the dumpsters, and they run along the wall and they come back until I make it. Now, you plan on moving that dumpster closer to my house, which means that it's going to be worse.
Okay, just making notes of your comments, and they'll be recorded for the record as well.
Okay, I would like to get a copy of this. Well, it's not, when I looked, it wasn't. And I couldn't, I came here the other day, people from City Hall couldn't. So I would like to get a copy of that. Okay. So I've been here 20 years, so I know everything that's going on on that block. And everything that I'm telling you, I have video of everything that goes on there. So I'm not saying something that's not true, something that I don't have proof of, I do.
Okay. All on my comments, just in response to that, and, and is that it had not reached any of, any of the things regarding what's taking place in the parking lot, has not reached the ears of the planning commission previously.
Well, reported to the city.
So that, that's for them to look into and control.
When do they plan on building this restaurant? What is the start date? Do you have a start date?
I think it would be really helpful, if you want to just list out all your questions, then if there's anyone else that has questions, we'll get their questions, and then the applicant can come and they can answer all of them at once. That's probably easier for everybody.
Right, to go through your list, because frankly, the back and forth is generally not the purpose of the, the, the public hearing. It's a chance for you to voice your comments and make sure you get them in within the timeframe so that they're there for the record and for further consideration. We may not have answers to all the questions that you have, but they, I mean, immediately. I've been providing answers as best I can based on what we know at this point.
Okay, so you got further meetings on this?
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Lisa Bryant, I live at 27727 Eldorado Place, next door to Oscar. I've been here 27 years. I guess one of my concerns would also be, my biggest concern would be the parking, if they are increasing that lot, because again, I have been there long enough to see them, what I consider destroying the green space in front of my house. I live directly across from the bank, so that is a huge concern of mine. Again, I would agree with what he's saying, is that they do not use the parking spaces that they have increased by tearing down all those trees previously. So I don't, would not want to see them do that for this. I would be concerned about any additional noise that might be generated by having a restaurant directly across from me. I would like to know how long the construction is going to take and how the construction affects, again, my living directly across from it. I realize that they're trying to turn things into like a walking, a walkable community and all of that, but at the same time, I live there and I don't want to live in a walkable main street like that. I also, lastly, would agree with the, how they handle their trash, the dumpsters and things like that, because I have seen so many squirrels and other, other rodents, animals, bringing, like you said, the bread and things out of the trash from there. I have to constantly then go out in my yard after they've dropped it so that my dog doesn't get it. And that's a problem for me as well. And it's probably my main concerns off the top.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sweet, have any online?
I'd like to read into the record.
Okay.
So this is from Net Kingsbury, who's a resident. She happens to be, she's a resident. So the email says, hi Jason, I recently looked at the packet. I frequent Panera, but I think it's sad that we would see another typical commercial strip under this plan. We have plenty now, and we, and they have vacancies. I would love to see them keep the existing pseudo-colonial building and its cool up. But at the very least, the proposal should meet all city requirements according to the planner's memo. It doesn't currently. Once it does, I assume there will be no way to get more than the typical look. If city standards permit it, what can we do? In particular, if there is going to be a drive-through, I think the stacking requirement should be stringent. Their menu isn't necessarily conducive to just grab and go. Some things involve a bit of a wait. And with residential right behind the building and its location at a corner with a traffic light, traffic flow will be very important. I forwarded your request on to other neighbors and suggested that since the meeting's happening tonight, they should contact you directly if they have comments. Thanks for asking, Annette. So that's what the email says.
Thank you. More thoughts for consideration as we discuss. If there are no other comments from the public. Close the public hearing. Move on to the planned unit development discussion and what an opportunity for the applicant to address the commission and the commission to have discussion regarding the planned unit development as well with possible feedback from the, regarding some of the things we've heard today.
Okay. See everybody again, thank you for having us, thank you for coming out tonight. My name is Todd Bundren, architect working with Panera Bread. Was here last time when we presented the project, I think, everybody. Also appreciate the comments from the community, all those things, good questions, I'm sure we'll, we'll get into some discussion here in a second. I have to make note that on the phone, I'm sorry, on the, on the screen again, is Mr. Dan Cook, Director of Design for Panera on the corporate side, the National Director of Design, and then Mr. Patrick Bennett, who is the civil engineer for this project, the CEC Engineering. And then we have the development group with us as well, three representatives. So we're all available for questions and comments. I didn't plan to go through the whole presentation again. I wanted to save that time for question and answer. So unless, unless there's anything from anybody else as part of the team, I'd be happy to answer any of the questions that you might have.
Okay.
I think a good place to start is just with the concerns that the residents brought up, right? I can understand absolutely the concern around the current location and the dumpster that's at the current location, and it sounds like it may, in some cases at least, not being, being maintained very well. So the dumpster location is going to be moved to a corner of the lot that the, is proposed for the site that is close to residential, right? It's not close to other businesses, it's not close to Southfield Road, it's, it's close to where the residential homes are. So I don't, what, what does Panera have to say about that issue?
Well. Okay, um, I mean, what I would say, first of all, just myself, and then I'll turn it over to maybe something like the landowner or, or, you know, let Dan speak a little bit about Panera's, you know, dumpsters are always attractive eyesores that you try, I mean, they're, they're, they're a necessary part of any business, I think. And especially when you're dealing with a restaurant, sometimes you're going to have product in there that attracts animals. But the idea would be that, and I'll let maybe Dan Cook speak to the operations of Panera, but the idea would be to get on top of that a little bit more and make sure that we have arrangements set up with waste management companies here locally, that the pickups are happening on time. get on top of that a little bit more and make sure that we have arrangements set up with waste management companies here locally, that the pickups are happening on time. And if there's a need to adjust something like that, I'm sure that they'd be more than happy to do that. But Dan, I don't want to speak specifically for Panera, so if you want to speak a little bit maybe to the operations and how waste management is handled.
Sure, so we, we do a general contract with the local waste management company on a national account and, you know, I will start.
Dan.
Hold on, yeah, I'm sorry.
It's not, it's not loud enough in the room, we need to get.
We need to.
No, it's a, I think that's from. Uh, I think Jim needs to turn the volume up in the room so we can hear the audio from Zoom. Try now.
Yeah, how about now, are we good?
Perfect.
Thumbs up, perfect. Um, so we, we do a national account with, uh, refuse companies and we'd certainly partner with the, with one in, in the location here and I will take the commentary back to our local operator on, on this as well, directly to the area operating partner and the joint, or JVP or the, the VP of that area and operations to, to mention the concerns that we have or that were heard from the public on making sure that that dumpster area is kept in good shape.
And what, what are the, we don't have a landscape plan obviously yet, but what, what, remind me what the plans are in terms of screening? I mean, obviously we'll, we'll have the standard dumpster screen, but will there be vegetation around it to prevent the residents across the street maybe to look into the, 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 the.
Right, no, that's a good question and. But Dan, I'm sorry.
I, I was going to say, yeah, we, we can certainly provide some heavier landscape around that. I won't say that the, the entire enclosure will be a hundred percent screened. You know, obviously plants are plants, they will, will certainly plant some healthy plants around it and, and make it attractive. And the, the enclosure itself will be of similar materials to the building. So architecturally, it will work well with what's on site there or what we're going to construct on site.
I think kind of hand in hand with that. Starting with that question, the next issue was relative to parking and encroachment into the green space and back.
Yeah, that's a, that, that is a great segue into, into that concern, which I think is a valid concern. I don't think at this point we have the intention of expanding that parking to the west at all, we're going to try to stay within this existing footprint. Um, and as a matter of fact, if you look at the, there was an initial plan that we showed last time, that was a colored plan. We are, we are looking to put more landscaping on that buffer zone. That would be between us and the community behind us, the neighborhood behind us. So trying to even enhance that screening a little bit with some landscape. So try to help improve that, that green space as an added benefit for the community, so.
Jill, can you, can you bring up the, there was the diagram that you were showing earlier, because it actually shows the property to the south, which has the extended parking that Mr. Dixon was mentioning. Yeah, so you can see, like this is the part that was extended into what used to be green space, right? And then based on what's in this plan at this point, that's not going to be done at the new proposed location.
We have no intention of expanding.
Obviously, the final site plan will confirm that, but in this point, that's.
For the record, that this issue has been discussed more informally in the past, even prior to this initial, well, last month's initial making the commission aware of the project or the potential project. And I have flagged that issue before when that parking was built, which was prior to my involvement on the planning commission. But the city had, as I understand it, had entered into an agreement at the time, they're already recognizing in general that there was parking shortage. And they had previously made it the decision that that was going to be a criteria, I think it was a criteria that was disasso, I don't think it was specifically associated with Panera specifically, but it was part of a development agreement that happened relative to that. And I have to get into the details or find out the details from the city. But I can assure you, in, I've been in the neighborhood for 30 years as well and I've walked, you know, I walk the streets a lot and I live on Eldorado, I'm not on that stretch of Eldorado. But the buffer zone there was probably about as previously as, but as good as I, I think you could almost expect between a residential neighborhood and the commercial district. So I was dismayed when the parking came right to the road the way it did as well. So I understand and I've got that appreciation for the aesthetics and there being a buffer. So I just wanted to put that on the record, so. And, and the commission takes it seriously, the importance of, of that relationship between our commercial district and the, and the residential district.
Yeah, one of the recommendations in Giffords Webster's letter is, well, it's actually kind of a requirement for this type of project to do a parking study. So before we get to the next approval phase of the site plan, a parking study will have to occur so that we have some actual data based on the intended use of the property to determine whether the parking that's already there is sufficient or not. Part of that, I think, should also include a, a traffic study, done traffic studies for other projects in the past as well. The traffic study will show us things like, would we expect there to be traffic backups that might bleed out onto Sunset and then potentially onto Eldorado Place as well? So what, what we need to work with is data and not just what we think might possibly happen. So that's why we got to do the analysis of the study, so we actually have the data to work from. But all that should be provided to the planning commission as part of the next step of reviewing the site plan for recommendation of approval or denial.
Yeah, I know there's likely other examples out there of, of similar type facilities or places of business. Uh, I've run into backups on, on major streets that way. So it is a valid consideration and something that, that needs to be considered as part of this. We've recently had discussions with other businesses or potential businesses about overflow onto residential streets and needing to prevent that from occurring. So whether it's parking or, or traffic, that's a, that's a valid consideration, so.
Yeah, part of the parking, part of the parking analysis would also include analysis of the stacking of cars in the drive-through lanes to make sure that there's enough room to stack the expected number of cars so that they wouldn't bleed over, right? And if they are, then we identify that as an issue and then we try to come up with a solution for it. Or, I mean, it's possible that the, the site plan could be denied or not recommended for approval based on something like that as well. That's a possibility. We need to see the final site plan with all this analysis, this data to come to that appropriate determination based on actual data.
Yeah, and just along those lines, I mean, at least from the letter, I think the letter said the requirement was 10, 10 spaces for stacking. It looks like there's 15 on here or so. Already even at that, just at the initial outset, you know, we're, we're five over what, what's required, so that's, so it's provided buffer. But, but you're right, we, you know, we have to do a comparison of similar facilities and more, more data oriented.
Right. It would be good to get feedback from the applicant as well to know what, obviously, communities are unique, traffic patterns are unique and, and obviously these businesses want to be in locations where they have the traffic, where it, where it serves the business and the business can serve their, their customers. But yeah, that consideration for, for what that impact is from, I mean, even, and that would be concerned with, with its impact on Southfield Road, so. And it would not be our intention that we would ever want to see overflow queuing or stacking of cars going into or going beyond that drive to the west in, into the neighborhood.
No. Sorry, I was just going to jump in on that word. Well, one thing I do want to mention is drive-through is purely an option for us, it is not our main driver, if you will, for sales. We, you know, we're not Chick-fil-A, we're not McDonald's, we're not a fast food user where 80 plus percent of their sales are through the drive-through. We're about 30% of our sales through the drive-through. And we do have other pieces in place to make sure that the drive-through runs smoothly with our pull forward spaces. We, we do, when, uh, when a, a location gets busy enough, we do the handheld order, then an associate is out there aiding with, with orders to, to help get the, the cars through the drive-through quickly. And our, and our order times do run fairly quickly, even though we are, you know, a, a customized product restaurant that, you know, it is made to order, but it's made very quickly. We typically don't see more than two to three cars behind our menu board at any given restaurant. And with that, I, I do not see us stacking out onto, apologies, up onto Sunset Boulevard at all in this location.
Let's, 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 if, if that, I think we've talked about the stacking now, I'd like to move on to like noise and.
One, one comment there just for, for gentlemen's concern. It also looks like too, and again, we'll have to study this more with the site plan, but just the circulation flow. It doesn't look like, it's less likely that people are going to exit out on Sunset. Because in order to do so, they got to go all the way around the building and, and deal with cars backing out and, and people walking around. So, I mean, it looks like it's really designed so that they're, they're going out on Southfield Road. So, so there really shouldn't be a, not to say that there won't be anybody ever going out on, on Sunset, but it's at least through the drive-through, the flow is out Southfield Road.
Bruce, unless they're taking a, a left.
Yeah. They might, they might want to go around the building, but.
No, I'm saying a left on Southfield Road, then it gets a little complicated.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the only other consideration will.
If I could just suggest something as well, and actually it's sort of the opposite. I'm sorry, what you were saying is what if the exit or the driveway onto Sunset is actually exit only? Which would allow people to safely turn left because they could use the light, I think that's what Mr. Fox was getting to. Um, and then we wouldn't have people who are entering the drive-through stacking out onto Sunset, rather they just continue circling around. I mean, you could have quite a big stacking, I would think you would never want to see that in a million years, all the way around the whole building. But that would at least prevent people from stacking out onto Sunset, so that might be something to consider.
One, one thing we don't want to do though is to have a, a left into the site across traffic, not at a, at a light, be the only entrance for folks headed north on Southfield and, and end up causing an issue for entering into the site from just that one entrance point.
Right.
And Joe, wouldn't that also kind of go against the walkability to some extent? Because you'd be then putting cars packing up where, where people who are in those parking spots that have to cross through the, the traffic.
Either there or they're going to go out on the sunset, which would probably.
I was going to say, another consideration there is, is the future road plan and exactly the pattern, which once again, I don't have it in front of me. But the, uh, you know, the Boulevard approach, which is, which is in the future for Southfield Road will, will have southbound traffic having to turn around. I don't know if there's a through, a through intersection where left turns will be permitted to go north.
That's true.
It may change.
In the future, so that, that, you know, by itself can be an issue.
Yeah, and I agree with the comment about turning left into the site, so northbound travel. And had considered that as well. Um, and I don't know if there's been a way that you can either tap into the existing network. I mean, you've got, you're showing a connection to the property to the south. So there may be some opportunities to tie those together a little bit more, or alternatively at that Sunset driveway, that maybe there's some concrete that can be added, you know, a directional. It's tricky because you've got two-way and then two-way on the side. But that might be another way to configure it so that people can still enter, but they would be forced to go around the whole building, if that makes sense.
I know there's a great issue there along that property line too, because I've walked it myself.
So it seems, it seems like it makes sense for the traffic study to figure out the best way.
Yeah.
To present that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Whether or not there'd ever be a situation where the traffic is heavy enough coming from the community up to that street and on. Now, you know, we tend to think of the business coming from not just the neighborhood and, you know, the walkability from the neighborhood, but also traffic that might, you know, on their way to work, stopping and picking up. So I suppose there is the potential for cars to be wanting to get into that queue from Sunset. Sunset is a road that people exit the neighborhood from because of the traffic lights. So it's, yeah, it's all part of the, how, how traffic, you know, how this, this business at that location will impact traffic both from off of Southfield Road and from within the community, so. And the next item I was going to talk about was the noise and the process of placing an order from a, from a drive-through, which honestly, to be honest, I don't do that often myself. But, but if there is a speaker or announcement, or if there's a large sign in that creates a lot of light or noise or sound that's continuous, we'd want to know something about that and how that could potentially be mitigated. Or, you know, how, you know, what we could do to control that, and so.
And so, yeah. I mean, I do know that the, the landscaping buffer is still on the west side and adding landscaping as well. So you do have the retaining wall that's there as well as the grass buffer going up to the retaining wall on the west side. And then the speaker in general, I think Dan could speak to that. Um, I don't think it's meant to be a loudspeaker, but he could certainly talk more about that.
Sure, so we, we use an HMI as the, the company we typically partner with for our drive-through equipment for the speaker and it is very localized to just that, that specific area. It's certainly not a loudspeaker. It's, it's up-to-date technology, it's, it's current technology to, to localize that sound right at just the drive-through window and really have the good conversation from the car to the, the folks inside who, you know, everybody inside is on a headset. So the whole team hears the order. It's not something that needs to be blaring out there for, for anybody to hear. Um, it's not continuous, um, the, the menu board is, um, you know, the lights out at, at, when business is off, you know, it's, it's not on 24/7. Um, and it's, you know, it's bright enough for, to be seen there at the, at the car. But again, it's not meant to be a beacon by any means to, to shed light beyond just what's needed for that immediate view right at the car.
Where, where is the menu board on the drawing? I, I actually couldn't, I was working on a small print.
Just below the number 19. Rectangle that's on an angle.
Great.
Right there.
Yeah, thank you. Right before the turn.
Just before the turn.
I had no internet today, so I wasn't able to expand it, make it larger.
No, that's fine.
The last piece was about the construction. So Mr. Bryant asked about the construction and the impact on neighbors of the construction. So maybe you can speak to that a little bit.
Sure, so timing wise, we're, we're fairly quick, shovels in the ground to open is between 150 and 180 days, which is, is fairly quick for a, a full development like this to, to repurpose this, this entire site. And, you know, the crew we have is certainly a professional crew, very, very clean. Get in, get the job done and, you know, we'd, we'd want it open, we don't want an extended construction site either. We, we prefer to get in, get it done, get it open quickly.
Is that typical for, is that duration typical for a, a site with demolition involved?
Yeah, so I, I can say typically if demo's not involved, we're usually below 150 or right at 150 days. So that additional time is due to the, the existing structure on the site.
And there's actually a letter from Lawrence Group at Xcibiday in the packet. It's on item 60, it's page 25 in the agenda packet. And there's an item about asking about a written statement that includes intended scheduled development and the recommended responses to say the start, the project is planned to start in 2022 and scheduled open spring 2023. So assuming you're starting in the third or fourth quarter of the, of 2022, then it would make sense to be tied to six months later would be spring 2023.
Yeah. We always try to beat that obviously, but conservative.
Well, what's the ideal construction season for you to, to be able to get that done? I know usually you're, you're into getting the building enclosed before the weather turns nasty so that you can continue interior work.
Today would be the perfect day to do construction.
Well, that's certainly weather-wise, that's perfect.
Super happy. No, just.
I know it's beautiful. No, get, getting dried in before, you know, you have some major weather events is, is something you're trying to tag and something you're trying to do because obviously then you're not gonna lose construction days. Uh, because that's just time and money, that's just people standing around not doing anything. So the sooner that we can get approval and then we can get everything, everybody comfortable in the community and with the building department to get our permits. Uh, I think, you know, we can love to get rolling. Uh, with that being said, there's always ways of working around weather. I mean, you know, especially nowadays, you can. Sure crews around here are very, very apt to work when it's cold or when it's raining or when it's, you know, when it's. Uh, not perfect weather, but, but, let's say, so when, uh, Panera's really good at working with their, their contractors on, on getting things done. Regardless of weather, but did that answer your question? I'm sorry if I jumped in there too really. I mean, I'm just wondering.
Just general, trying to provide or get a sense of information, the duration and season when that might occur. For residents who might be concerned about.
I mean, the, the, the perfect timing would be, let's, let's get going. Let's get dried in. Let's get, you know, roughed and dried in so that we can focus on the interior of, of the building when the weather's bad. You know, that would be, you know, before the turn of the weather. That doesn't always happen, but getting large parts of the exterior construction done when the weather's nice. Um, I think would be preferred. Right, right. And, and a lot of times we'll work with, uh, local communities and building departments to see if maybe, maybe there's a way to get an early release on a, a demo permit. Once they're comfortable enough with the project and we're pretty far along with the approval process, the idea would be to try to work with the building department and see if there's a way to. Maybe get on site early and start, you know, to get, you know, getting, getting demo going while they're wrapping up the rest of the approvals. Whether that's an option here or not, I'm not, I'm not sure yet. Uh, but anything we can do to, you know, yeah, get that going while the weather is still nice. We're a hundred percent open to ideas or, you know, anything. And, and, and to try to keep that duration quick, that also helps with, you know, the speed of the construction, if you can get in early and get it done and get it moving. Cause uh, you know, these GCs make money if they get done quick. So they're all trying to do that.
But regardless of the duration of the construction project, there's gonna be some impact on the neighbors. That's the other thing Mr. Bryant was referring to is. So what ideas, uh, does a group have for mitigating the impact of heavy machinery, heavy equipment? Hallers that hauling away dirt and construction debris, um, to make sure it doesn't have a negative impact on the residents that live around there. Dust, noise. Tearing up the road, right? Trucks running on it, things like that.
Right, and I can let, uh, Mr. Bennett chime in if he wants to, but there'll be a sweat plan that goes, goes along with our cemental and we'll work closely with the building department to make sure that. If there's particular hours, uh, that construction should be limited to, that we would comply with that. If that's. Something that the, the community would like, or that we, you know, we've done those kind of things before. Uh, making sure that, you know, it's clearly designated construction entry points. Uh, that are agreed to amongst the city and then, you know, Panera and the GCs. So all these things can be worked through. During the approval process to make sure that it's a smooth, now, with that being said, I mean, it's. Get guys out there with large pieces of equipment. So there may be. You know, I mean, it just, there are some times that, that unfortunately there are things that are gonna be a little bit loud, but. Uh, I think, I think, you know, if you plan appropriately early on and you try to be a good neighbor, you can work through those things. So. I know we've been successful in the past to do that. Um, and it's a pretty quick construction project. This isn't a, you know. Two-year-long project that's gonna just completely up in the community. I think it'll be fairly quickly. They'll get that building down real quick.
What's the expected impact to the right-of-way on Eldorado Place? As the plan stands right now, I, yeah, regarding, there's a retaining wall, there's landscaping there. Do, is enough, has engineering been happening in the background at this point yet to, to understand what, what's gonna happen in? These neighbors' front yards?
No, that, that's a great question and a great concern and I. The, the traffic analysis has not been done yet. So that's something that, you know, isn't working. The engineering is ongoing as we speak, but. That has been a serious consideration as we've designed. That's why we're keeping that retaining wall. Uh, we're adding landscape there. There's no, if you notice, another thing I like about the site plan is that there's no parking that is pointing towards the community. So you're not gonna have any headlights. Uh, we're not encouraging anybody to park back there. So I think one of the comments was that some people are, are loitering in that back. Uh, that back lot on that neighboring adjacent property. Um, the first parking spot you see is almost. Uh, in line with the building itself. So we're not encouraging anybody. Uh, to be parked back in that back lot. I mean, the only thing you're gonna have are people who come through. They get in line, they pick up, you know, they order, or they have the rapid pickup and they jump around, they get their product and they're out of there. So I think that is a good attempt, a good faith attempt to discourage folks from just kinda. Loitering back there in a car and, and, and beating up to no good. And for law enforcement, it's, it's, it's a benefit if they drive by at night and they see somebody. Parked back over there. I mean, it's pretty obvious that they shouldn't be there. You know, I think, I think your law enforcement will figure out pretty quick, you know, that. Somebody has a car parked back there on that west side of the property, there's, they're probably up to no good, or at least it's where the drive-by. So, you know, as far as the site planner is, is concerned, we were very cognizant of that ne- neighborhood behind us and we wanted to be a good neighbor. And, and hope that, you know, we achieve that. So.
Yeah, I think it's worth noting too that, um, you know, the, the, the village center district zoning encourages this walkable district and kind of. Visions all these types of businesses being closer to Southfield Road.
That was my question, zero lot lines.
Yeah, yeah, and that, and so this is.
That's the big elephant in the room regarding, regarding, yes, the major thing that, you know, the community is hopeful that we could. You know, obviously do a development that gets us more into an, uh, urban streetscape as it were for that walkability.
But I think you gotta keep in mind, not everybody in this community believes we're gonna have this streetscape. There's a large portion of the community that doesn't buy into that. So you can't discount those people.
Doesn't buy into it or doesn't want it.
That, that's, I'm not trying to say.
Or, or buys into it, but doesn't believe it's ever gonna happen.
Well, it's very clear until Southfield Road is turned into whatever it's gonna turn into. You can't do any type of streetscape on Southfield because you don't know if you're gonna have any parking. So there's a bit contingent in the community that recognizes that. So we keep saying one of those walkability. It looks good on a piece of paper, but in reality, it's not something that we were.
Likely some sort of hybrid.
So when we say, you know, Panera is not, their plan isn't, you know. Right up against the street. We all know it's not gonna be right up against the street. Okay, so in reality, we can't really say, well, the plan says. The plan says a lot of things that haven't been done and nothing's been done under the plan. This is actually the first development that has taken place in the Village Center. In very, in a very long time.
Well, Joe, Joe said in your intro, like, there hasn't been any development done in this, uh, district since the zoning ordinance was.
Plan was developed in two thousand and nine. And just has been re-approved because it looks nice. It doesn't mean that there's been a development. This is the first development since it started, two thousand and nine. This is two thousand and twenty-two. So if we have a development that's fitting on an existing piece of property, that they're trying to be asking, you know.
But the vacant piece of property that has been underutilized.
Property, they're trying to be as, as respectful to the community, respectful to the neighborhood. I think the minute we say, well, you know, the Panera plan doesn't hit the, the, the front of the street. We're just saying it when we know it's really not a discussion point. At this point, that's not an issue. The issue is all the other things. And I think until we get, we can, if we stay focused on the other things. We're just creating noise with things that's not gonna really matter under this plan unit development. So I think if we could stay focused on what's really important, which is the traffic study. Uh, you know, the layout, the dumpster, and, you know, part of the, the debris issue, that's a landlord issue. They don't, Panera doesn't own the site. The people who own the site are sitting here. They have to address that. So hopefully you got their cards because if there's people back there, let them deal with that. Because Panera would turn around and say, we need to talk to our landowner and they're sitting here. So the issue starts with them. So make sure we address it with them. The issue with the police, that's a separate issue. Uh, you know, loitering, that's a problem, not just over there. And so, but I think for the planned unit development, which is what the discussion is about. I think we need to stick to the traffic study is important. And all the other issues that relate to, you know, noise, construction, timing, uh, layout, dumpster, things like that, that actually fit under the discussion. And that create another this conversation of things related to this that really are part of this discussion.
But I, now, the reason I bring up the, uh, the, the walkability, the street escape thing is that. The, the Panera team did take and that think about and considered. Moving the building closer to Southfield Road in order to make it more in compliance with that vision. And one of the things that, that would have resulted in is parking on the west side of the building. And I think that more, may, we need to maybe look at that zoning ordinance, uh, when, at some point in the future. Because that will be a problem for any building that gets developed along Southfield Road that's in line with the vision of. It's gonna create all this parking that's gonna be facing the residential side of that street. So.
Or get, or get, uh.
Get taken away by a cow.
Recognize, yeah, or recognizing that when you start to create that increased density. That, uh, a more public parking solution, and that might mean a site somewhere with a parking structure. Or maybe even starting out with a parking lot, which, um. Which I believe was part of the effort that likely resulted in the parking that existed. Um, or that was put in place behind the, uh.
The FedEx building.
Yeah, behind the, right, be, be, behind the, the, uh, those businesses. So.
So I guess the question I have is, at what point does the applicant believe that the issues that will be addressed? Will be addressed so that we can continue with the process forward? How long would it take to kind of address these, get the studies done? So we have an idea of timing.
No, that's.
We already got a six-month construction period. I'm saying this is May. So if it's gonna take another month and a half to get all this stuff done, now we're into July.
Really August before we can review it.
The dates up and I know you wanna be closed in before basically October.
I think there was a provided timeline for, for the process that we've committed to. And I think it's June. Maybe June tenth, I think was the next submittal that we were gonna be making and trying to have as much information. In this document provided, I would have to defer to Mr. Bennett on the call if he's still there, I'm not sure. About, about exactly how long the traffic study would take or how long that process. That to me would be the critical path for this team. Would be getting that engaged and getting that going. But a lot of the other documentation, we've been working in the background since, you know, for a while. So. I'd have to, I don't have it in front of me right now, but there was a, a, a schedule that we agreed to. Uh, with the planning department as far as, you know, when we're gonna have particular meetings and when we're gonna have particular submittals. And for some reason, I think mid-June was the next big one, and that was gonna be a lot more information on, on, on documents and on paper, based on. Comments we got from today, anything that came up from the community, from the commissioners. Um, and then obviously working closely with the planning department moving forward, but. We're, we're trying to move it at, at, at a rapid pace. You know, we're not, but I, but I, but I do think that, that critical path element, I think you've, you've keyed right into it. That, 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 getting that traffic study done is, is gonna be priority one for us.
Is it possible with the traffic study, because you guys have this, done this one other time? I think this is a second one that you've done. Is that correct? And so I'm wondering about precedent for your previous. And lessons learned, because obviously if it's, is it, if it's apples to apples, if it's the same size, if it's larger. Uh, if the flows are similar, I, I'd wanna know. Yeah, right. So, so I, I have a lot of questions about a new format that's actually, this is the second one. And what the impacts of that one were, if it's, you know, in the strip mall, that's huge, well, that's totally different.
Right.
And so some of those things would actually help, um, me understand, uh, when I'm reading the traffic study, it is. Are we actually comparing apples to apples? Or really, are we the first one to do this this close, uh, to a residential neighborhood?
That's a great, that's a great question. I'll, I'll take a first stab and then Dan, if you wanna jump in or if you wanna jump in first, but I know. When we say it's the first one, um, really what we're referring to is, is this is the first next-gen prototype building. So let's, let's focus on the look of it, the materials of it, the inside of it. And really what that is, is a culmination of a lot of technologies and operational procedures that have been happening over years and years and years of Panera. So they've, Panera i- introduced, I don't know the exact date, Dan, you probably know it backwards and forwards, but you know. The drive-through option has been part of the Panera operation procedure for many, many years. So they have a lot of data. You know, with their over two thousand, the, the locations in North America, right? So there's a lot of information. And to Dan's point, what they've determined is that it's not the biggest part of their business, but they do really like that being an option, right? Mix into that, well, we found what was happening prior to, uh, the pandemic and then it was even influenced even more during the pandemic was this idea of. Of customers really enjoying this idea of rapid pickup. So they can go on their, on their phone and they can order and that can either happen at that second bypass lane that you saw on the site plan. Or folks can park, come in, and they're gonna have a display there like shelves. You've probably seen it in all kinds of different kind of fast casual restaurants now where. You know, and it's a great option. You walk in, your bag's ready, you grab it, you're out the door. So. So that's a technology that's been coming, you know, through the, the, the pipeline. And so when, 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 when we say this is the first, you know, the second place, the first one was in Baldwin, Missouri. You're, what you're really getting is the culmination of a lot of different technologies and a lot of research and studies over the, over many, many, many years that have come together into this new prototype. Now, they'll probably be in, you know, five years, they'll be, you know, next gen two, you know, cause, because you're gonna continually learn, continually change and continuing. To align with the market and what they want. Um, so when, when, when Dan talked about, you know, we r- rarely see three cars backed up behind. Uh, the men- menu board, that's based on what they've seen. I mean, that's on data that they have in-house. So, uh, when we say things, you know, like. When, when, we're talking about the materiality, we're talking about operations, we're talking about parking and staff. This, we've seen this happen all over the country. And so, and they have models that are, you know, in malls, they have. I was just in the Pentagon the other day. They're gonna put a Panera in the Pentagon, right? So I mean, there's, there's, if you name the type of development, there's. Been a Panera that's been involved with that. So this is not, you know, uh, something that they haven't done before, being on a, on, 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 on a site like this. So there's, there's a lot of data, there, there's a lot of things. And so this traffic study hopefully will be. True to what you're gonna see. With that being said, I always put a caveat, things happen, right? I mean, there, there could be one day that. It just so happens that there was a soccer tournament somewhere and everybody at the soccer tournament decided to come at one time, right? But for a majority, ninety percent of the time, I mean, we don't foresee parking go, or the, the stacking going back on Eldorado.
And hopefully that soccer team is eating in the cafe.
Yeah, exactly, because most of the folks want to come in. So, so Dan, I, I don't know if you wanna chime in and, and speak a little, you know, more about that, about, about your experience, you know, kinda. With the things we've been talking about.
Yeah, I, I echo everything you said, Todd. Thanks for that. Um, I was at our Baldwin Cafe this morning, actually looking at, uh. Some drive-through efficiencies and, and how to make it better. And, and, uh, we're actually going back into that one and. And tweaking the merge point where the, the cars come together and, and, uh. Um, learning from the, from that one being open since November of last year. So, um, all of those learnings will of course be. Rolled in or baked in, if you will, into, um, this location to, to make sure that this one is set up for success with what we've learned to date. Um, again, we really don't see, and I, and I witnessed it today, I really never saw more than two to three cars beyond the menu board. Um, when I was at the cafe from about seven thirty till roughly ten thirty, eleven o'clock. No, that's the morning, um, shift at the cafe, but we, we still do a decent breakfast. Through the drive-through with folks getting coffee and, and bagels and, and breakfast sandwiches on the way to work. Very similar location in a suburban area. Um, it, it's, uh, actually, it's a very similar layout to this. Um, in terms of, uh, parking field and site flow and, and how cars access that. Um, certainly happy to provide that site plan. To, uh, to staff here, um, to the commission to, um, so we, we could review that with you and, and look at site flow. Um, of course, every site is different, but that one has, um, if I'm remembering right, it, it. Very similar stack that it's, I believe, three to four cars beyond the, the menu board. Before that does spill out on to a, a common shopping center driveline. Um, and it is fairly rare that the, the cars do stack up, uh, back beyond that point.
Yeah, and that rapid pickup lane, that's, you know, that, that thing has been great too. People have really started to enjoy. Once they figure out they can get on their phone, order and skip the line. It's like a fast pass at Disney World, you know.
Right. They experience faster service by coming in, they're gonna do that. Stay in a car, I would think.
That's what I do.
Yeah, I mean, my, my only other question, and I apologize for not being the last speaking when you guys actually presented the whole thing, so I couldn't ask my questions then. Again, was actually the zero lot line, uh, just because of the proximity to City Hall. Not even just walkability, but just contiguous nature to be called a downtown for other grant dollars, et cetera, et cetera. You know, through like M, M, we have an MEDC here. It, it's just very difficult to do if you have setbacks the way it's designed. And I, I get it. I understand totally why it makes sense and unless I, I totally get what you're saying about. Uh, it's gotta be a problem that has to be solved and it's a bigger thing than just, uh, vendor, but I'm also looking at the precedent of, to Les's point, this is new. Uh it's gotta be a problem that has to be solved and it's a bigger thing than just vendor, but I'm also looking at the precedent of, to Les' point, this is new construction. And if we're doing that um here, um well, then why, what's to say the next construction? Is also not going to and and you know, I I really do believe that if to be the village and have uh those zero lot lines. It is actually going to make it feel more like a downtown type of feel and walkability is increased, but I'm also looking at the grant opportunities. Um at least attractiveness for grant opportunities, uh counting how many zero lot lines we have next to each other. Um that's always been my goal as a as a citizen here, so. I I realize I'm beating a dead horse probably from the last meeting, I can just sense it.
It's important to bring that.
It's important to bring it up and it's an ongoing discussion. Um it's it's that I I think there's a level of give and take here regarding. No new businesses or what new businesses are coming and what is happening and do you say no and be hopeful and hopeful and hopeful? Or do you act on the opportunities to at least, I don't want to say hold on to what you have, but because they're already. The 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 possibility of something being built new always has that possibility of it encouraging something else. I think the thought occurred to me if there was any arrangements being made, it's like, okay, you've got a you've got an outfitted uh. Similar facility that you currently occupy and what's happening with that next. And and uh you know, whether Panera likes competition or whether they. I don't know any restrictions against, you know, what might move in there that would be competition.
It seems to me, you know, I have to, I have to comment, it seems to me this is a prime value intersection. And it's it's a, it's got a lot of visibility. Um it's a great opportunity for the Cernow Company to show their vision. On what the Village Center should be, for twelve years, we've had this uh master plan. That says we want to have zero lot lines. What consideration was given to putting in a building that matched that? And why was that not, you know, I mean, did you look at what our master plan asked for? And, you know, what were the reasons that you chose not to do that? I mean, this. We talk about the redevelopment of Southfield Road. This is clearly the first time in the Village Center, as we've talked about. We have a great opportunity here. If we just replace a one-story building with a one-story building with a drive-through, that's a restaurant. What does that say? I'd really like to understand. Um the thought process you had in coming up with this design.
Well, it's a very valid point. You know, we've we've taken a lot of consideration uh into this zero lot line and and there's a couple of things. Uh we understand that this may not be an exact conformance with the master plan and we. Uh you know, as far as the zero lot line, but we've also seen that there hasn't been. The uh activity that, you know, we've liked to see as far as, you know, tenants coming in and, you know, people lining up the door to be. In the Village Center and other landlords around town, we we do have a significant stake in Lathua Village, you know, we also have a our our reputation. Uh that we've had in the community for over forty years and we take that, you know, very seriously and. We take uh, you know, Mr. Dixon and and Ms. Bryant and uh, you know, all the uh the neighbors and the community very seriously and. I think we should address those comments offline as well. Um because as Commissioner Stansberry said, you know, we're the owners of the land and and we'd like to know exactly what's going on, so. We welcome people to bring things to our attention, but as far as the uh development is concerned. Uh this was an existing building, it was a bank, it was a drive-through and a couple of years ago. Uh you know, Panera had approached us and said that their, you know, their model has changed, this was the first Panera. Uh in Michigan, it was the first Panera to actually convert to Panera from Saint Louis Bread and they'd been in the community for twenty-five years. And they uh, you know, through the, you know, success of their company and through the, you know, the way their model changed, they approached us and said that. You know, they uh, you know, wouldn't be able to stay in the existing location. And so one of the things that we did was we reached out to the uh to the community and, you know, this isn't the first time that, you know, we're just. Kind of plopping this in in everyone's court and, you know, the whole history behind the PUD. I think and the reason that the PUD got passed is because the community, um you know, would have been, uh I think, very disappointed. Uh if they would have lost Panera as an anchor tenant because of the fact that they have. Businesses that are meeting there that they have, you know, it's a gathering place and it's a staple and it's it's not a McDonald's, it's not a Starbucks. And uh it would be a shame to see to see them go and I think it also demonstrates the fact that. Uh you know, we want to be able to see in the community and I think part of the master plan uh shows that they want. Businesses to prove that they can be successful in this community and so one of the things that we wanted to do. Uh was keep a business that could demonstrate the success of twenty-five years uh and and also into the future. And um so we got a lot of support from the community and we also weighed out the other factors that, you know, the master plan has. Like, you know, curb appeal and attracting future development. Uh right now, a- as, you know, it's been mentioned, there hasn't been any other development in the Village Center in years. And so one of the things that we, you know, had to come to the conclusion of is there has to be some kind of a catalyst. Uh something that can go on that's new and that, you know, has the, you know, millions of of investment dollars and, you know, something that can show, hey. This is a business that's been in Lathua for years, this is a company that is devoted to the community, that doesn't want to just move down the uh the street. And is willing to make a significant investment and I think that, you know, we'd be able to use that. Um and and as an advantage to, you know, showing other companies that that, you know, might want to be attracted to to come into Lathua Village. Um and, you know, uh you know, based on the success of a of a of a very longstanding business. And so I think that, you know, the the landscaping and all the things that, you know, we've talked about are going to be further contemplated. Uh you know, in the development agreement, we're going to have to make sure that we comply with those things, but it is a trade-off, I mean, we're not going to act like. You know, this is in complete conformance and I think that's the point of the PUD is that it allows. Now, the point of the PUD isn't to just allow zoning flexibility, that's that's clearly not the point, the point of it is to show that there's. The objectives, you know, uh of the master plan and, you know, certain respects are being met and we believe that. Uh you know, the jobs that are going to be created, um you know, the fact that we're redeveloping properties in the Village Center, we're protecting business districts. I mean, this has been a vacant building for years at this point and uh, you know, we're we're again, just, you know, we're. We're changing up the selections of of goods and services that are going to be offered, we, you know, we sent a survey out at the end of last year and. Hundred five responses, there was a huge uh, you know, majority that that was looking for for a restaurant, uh you know, more restaurants to come into town and so. You know, we believe that this investment is going to have a huge benefit uh to the community and, you know, there are going to be other developments and. You know, it's it's uh, it's. It's a good point about, you know, setting a precedent about like what's going to happen in the future, but I do think that, you know, for us. The the benefits of having an opportunity like this will bring in uh, you know, more action into into the into the town. Will allow us to have more developments uh down the road and that's that's really kind of what our our, you know, our goal has been. I mean, it's not in the Village Center, but the only development, um you know, in the past and I know there's uh the gas station going up. Across the street, but the uh strip center that that we, you know, redeveloped, so we're we're heavily invested in Lathua, we have. You know, a lot of our eggs, uh we're a family company and, you know, um it's taken us some time. Uh as the the next generation of the Cernow Company has has stepped in with, you know, virtually no, you know, development experience to to build our team. And to bring on an operations manager and, you know, a top-notch leasing agent, I mean, we've we've built our bench out and we're, you know, committed to, you know, developing. We're 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 looking at plans for across the street, I think that that's, you know, that that's really the biggest elephant in the room. Uh is what's going to happen, you know, to the Akiva School and that's going to be something that I think is going to have a huge impact. On a much bigger impact on, you know, what's going on in the community and how we're going to have to address that with the neighbors and. You know, what what people want, we're a very community-oriented company, it's it's part of our core values and, you know, that's why we brought this up. Now, the pandemic threw things off, but we did bring this up to the to the community and residents showed up and this was something that people wanted and so. You know, we would never want to just kind of steamroll over a community, especially one that, you know, we've been, you know, heavily, heavily involved in for years, so we. We believe the community wanted this and I understand the parking and the setback is an issue, but we 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 believe that the the benefits of this are. You know, tremendous and this is, you know, finally an opportunity to make it happen.
So did you consider any multi-story facilities in a design that would. Provide that flexibility for the restaurant operations and a live-work uh environment that the master plan calls for?
So I believe that, you know, for this particular site. Uh again, you know, we we're we're looking at the, you know, business model of what the, you know, for Panera and they. You know, we're looking for a freestanding, you know, building to to have as a gathering, however. You know, as stakeholders in the community and as owners of multiple properties in the Village Center, we're, you know, we're exploring. What we might be able to do as far as, you know, exactly what you're talking about um in in other parts of the Village Center.
What percentage of Panera's um. Panera's facilities currently have uh drive-throughs?
We lost Dan and Patrick. Dan is the guy who would know that.
We can address.
Yeah, yeah.
What we do know is they're, you know, they're converting pretty much all of the Paneras to have a drive-through component.
Yeah.
Uh when they are relocating, unless you're in an urban setting where you simply, you know, can't add drive-through.
Or City of Plymouth comes to mind, because I know that's like immersed in the neighborhood and I don't think it has one.
And I know this um dislocation, quite honestly, um you know, to echo some of the the statements is. Uh really trying to keep this staple in the community. Uh it wasn't a matter of them relocating and going up the street or down the street, it was really losing them in the community altogether. And as we surveyed the residents, uh we know that restaurants are what they're looking for. You go into the Panera now and you see community members meeting there every single day. Um and it's just such a staple in the community that we've really worked hard to try to match uh keeping them in the community. But also looking at the master plan, we did look at trying to move it closer to Southfield Road and for safety concerns and circulation. It it didn't work, um so like you said, weighing weighing everything together, uh we feel this is the best plan that we could. Come up with with input from the community and from the planning commission.
And again, I apologize because that's the conversation that I didn't have with.
It's a valid. It's an ongoing conversation and.
If I can just chime in, and I appreciate the the question that you raised and I think that this is exactly the kind of conversation that planning commission should be having. Um with the applicant is specifically about this. Um I think to raise the the points that you have are excellent and. Thank you for all, to all of you, the all of you who made comments. It was challenging to even write our letter for this because we acknowledge all of those things and everything that everybody said is pretty much in. Our letter, um and then we get to, then we get to say, okay, so what do you think? Um and really giving that to you to make that final determination. Um one thing that I might note that if if in the interest of moving things on. The the parking, the queuing, well, we don't know about the parking standards because we don't know where you are with those in terms of what you're meeting and what. We might be asking for in terms of flexibility, um we can probably make that determination. If, and there could be some shared parking, I'm assuming, happening next door. So you may not need to add any more parking on this site, you may be able to accommodate it all and not ask for even have any relief from parking standards, is that fair to say? Um thinking that your, this application would not be necessarily asking for any kind of a waiver. From the standards for queuing for the drive-through, that's one of the things that they probably don't need to ask for. So if if that was something that the planning commission felt comfortable seeing again at the time of final site plan review. If you were to make a any kind of a determination or you felt at the point when you feel comfortable moving this on to city council. I don't necessarily think unless you feel differently that a traffic or a parking study is required before you make that determination. That's up to you, but I as. From an observation standpoint, I don't know that you need that before you move it on if you find that the other things qualify.
You mean as far as approval for for the PUD?
Right.
For for this project.
Right.
Uh what if the traffic study or the parking study shows something glaring that we didn't think about? But we've already approved the PUD.
I think, um, well.
Wouldn't that be part of the development agreement?
It's part, it would be, but it's also part of your site plan review.
Yeah, sure. So you could include that information in whatever determination of a recommendation for approval.
Essentially, this is the conceptual site plan, it's looking at the use, um does there appear to be the the capacity here? To accommodate everything on site, I think there may be some tweaks that need to happen, that can happen.
Jill, is the PUD tied specifically to the applicant? In other words, if.
Yes.
The building gets developed in accordance with for the site, the project gets developed in accordance for this purpose. If somewhere down the road, Panera's gone. What, where does that leave the status of the site as it's currently developed?
The site would need to be maintained and operated consistent with the development agreement, so it doesn't matter who owns it. It'll still have to be uh meet all the conditions that are part of any eventual approval.
And there's no obligation for the city at this point or afterwards to that as a precedent. On a particular site for us to have to entertain a PUD for subsequent sites.
Absolutely not, and I think that looking.
We want to see development, I don't think we want to say and we would probably certainly welcome more restaurants, but we wouldn't necessarily want. Drive-through strips through the rest of the community.
Exactly.
And being held to a precedent because of that.
And that keys in on.
Recording in progress.
Challenge for your findings are or what are you going to say about this project that. Make it clear to few to future applicants that just because we're approving this or potentially. Doesn't mean that we're going to approve drive-throughs all up and down Southfield Road, that this has certain characteristics and if you look on page five. Of our letter under letter E. There are, there are things that we've acknowledged, um like number three, for example. Um drive-through uses are incompatible with the pedestrian-oriented vision of this district, however, the applicant notes that their establishment is primarily based on in-room dining. Um if we look at number five, we talk about transition buffer to residential areas, the site has been vacant. New development of this caliber may catalyze additional development in the district and the corridor. Um number six talks about active open spaces, parks, plazas, market or festival spaces for public use. The comment, the project includes outdoor dining that while it's privately owned, can serve and and probably likely will. Serve as community gathering spaces. Um and number eight, um looking at street sidewalks, lighting and the light consistent with the master plan, I think that those do reflect the. The conditions of the master plan, so. Thinking about what it is about this specific project, which is why we have it as a PUD and not just as a permitted use, right? So we're going to recognize that there's different, uh each site is going to be different, each project is going to be different. And each project will respond in its own way or not to the master plan and the zoning ordinance.
From a historical perspective, wasn't there an application a while ago, uh before I moved here? For a a coffee shop down towards your house, Bruce?
Yes.
That was with a drive-through, how is this different than that? I'm just curious from a historical perspective. A site, anybody remember?
Oh, oh, you're, oh, you're thinking of the Tim Hortons.
Was it Tim Hortons, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, Tim Hortons was was going to be the first one under the new zoning standard, but they 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 want, the the big difference is they they wanted. I think it was like eleven or thirteen major variances to the to the rules or to the to the zoning ordinance and there were also some. Neighborhood, big differences in the in in.
The size of the site.
It was, it was a great plan, it was the wrong site for that plan.
All right.
It had the, as I recall, the drive-through wrapped all the way around the back and the front of the building.
The stacking was going to be horrible.
Yeah.
Yeah, there were, there were a lot of things that were were wrong with that site for that.
Thank you.
In fact, we actually, I think, recommended to them to go where you guys are going right now.
Yeah, the original uh plan was to have the drive-through at the current site.
And so. Yeah, that was the basis for when you first came to us was relative to fitting it onto that site and I think we left it. And that was probably right before COVID or maybe not exactly right before, but we had not seen a plan. Of how that would work and I was wondering at that time whether that drive-through would have extended into that. And I was wondering at that time whether that drive-through would have extended into that parking lot. But, yeah, and you're correct in saying, I think the community provided support of, you know, the importance of Panera to the community was part of that process and how we ended up with the consideration for the PUD to begin with.
Yeah, we originally had it for the Oakland Development Center. And that was, again, you know, part of that was, you know, not wanting to lose Panera as, you know, an important anchor and also an anchor for our centers. I mean, we're not going to act like this is just, you know, this is a private enterprise and it's, you know, expensive to maintain the buildings and, you know, having tenants is obviously crucial for our survival. But as we talked about it with planning, there were a couple, you know, hints of, well, gee, it would be great if you could already use an existing site that's already set up as a drive-through. And it was right around that time that there was a, you know, a private equity company that had owned that bank. And we had worked, you know, extremely hard and found, you know, a mutual friend that knew the seller. And we, you know, we worked every angle that we could and ended up getting it under contract. And we basically, you know, agreed and got to move that over to the old bank site.
I think this project has the potential, while, as going back to, while it doesn't meet the strict guidelines, you know, outside of the PUD, I think there's an opportunity for the community and for us to encourage, require some features that I think set some of the language for what we would expect to see for a walkable community that are outside of the, you know, build-to-the-line requirement, that are still positives for what we would expect to see in a new development and making it attractive and making it, I guess, encourage the walkability outside of, you know, literally a strict urban, you know, build-to-the-property-line approach. So that's my take on it. If there are other, other things we need to discuss regarding the PUD and, you know, the opportunity for things that we would like to see, I guess the time now is to be, certainly continue thinking about it more as far as what those requirements might be relative to what we've been, what we've seen so far.
Yes, I had that question that I was going to ask Scott, but he's obviously not online, but maybe Jill, you can help answer it.
Shortly.
Well, the Zoom.
Ended.
Yeah. I think they had internet connection problems. So there is discussion and action in the agenda topic. So we're going to need to presumably take a motion to recommend approval of the PUD. I'm guessing that's what the action is.
Or recommendation to those.
Whatever. You may also postpone if you wish.
We can postpone.
You can deny if you wish.
But the PUD still needs to be negotiated even after it's recommended for approval, right?
Correct, so if you.
This isn't the final language of what the PUD will be. That's just an approval for the city council to carry forward with negotiation of the applicant.
So what would be helpful for city councils, if you make a recommendation that city council approves the PUD, that you send them some recommendations and/or conditions that would be associated with their determination.
So the question is, do we have those recommendations already in mind? Like, do we know what that laundry list of things is?
I think the point is to, that's before us. We need to make, start enumerating what those would be.
Exactly right.
So.
Anybody got any ideas?
Well, I've listed three as we've gone on. One was the heavy landscaping around the dumpster. Then we were enhanced landscaping around the back area of the Eldorado side. We said a traffic study. Those were the three that I had, at least from the discussion.
And I would say.
Could you repeat those? I got the landscaping around the dumpster and then I'm sorry.
And then enhanced landscaping on the Eldorado side, the buffer screening between the lot and the residents in Eldorado.
Thank you.
Traffic study.
Traffic and parking.
Yeah, traffic and parking.
No further encroachment into the right-of-way of Eldorado Place. Beyond current?
Correct.
Well, that goes along with Bruce was saying about traditional screening in that section.
Something about noise or acoustics? I don't know if we've got a standard set for.
We have assurance that the speakers by reputable company, the speaker and the ordering.
We had similar criteria at the gas station when we did it for, that they didn't have the screens.
We had no TVs.
No TVs, right? And I know it's not the same thing, but we would want a similar assurance and, you know, audibility control, I guess, so that we don't, can be assured that we don't have noise issues.
For the residential area, particularly behind it.
Specifically within the traffic study, as you're exiting out, can we look to see, and again, I don't know, that's what the experts are for, the exit onto Southfield Road, if that's actually a right? Otherwise, loop around and take the light so we can actually, instead of, you know, you can kind of curve it a little bit. Because that would actually make, I'm assuming, and maybe the traffic study will actually say, no, that's a bad idea, Will. But my theory here is that that would actually improve the flow of the traffic from a drive-through or folks exiting, since that's the major road anyway. I'm just looking at that as, loop back around and now you can use the light.
Yeah, so one of the, just kind of expanding on the, you know, the recommendation with the conditions of the traffic study, specifically with traffic flows for entering and exiting onto Sunset.
Right, 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 right. That's one split I'm going to be honing in on, just so you know.
And maybe specific signage?
Yeah.
Signage that will be provided to direct traffic?
About no left turn from on Sunset Boulevard into the neighborhood?
Whatever the traffic study deems, tell us what the signage will be.
Right.
Where it'll be placed, how visible, the size.
Yeah, one thing I'd do, just to change the topic a little bit, from the community benefit side, one thing I'd like to see, I brought this up at the last meeting, you know, in the plan, you talked about, I think it was a pediment for artwork or something like that. I'd like to see, like, maybe, you know, you work with one of the DDA Main Street Committees to actually put a piece of art there, you know, because that's something that could act as a catalyst for the community as well. So rather than just provide the pediment, but actually provide a piece of art would be, I think, a great community benefit.
I think we talked about it, that northeast corner where we're providing that little park area, if you will, and the benches and the bike storage.
Yeah, and then I think the other thing I brought up at the last meeting too was the bike racks to be consistent, you know, with what we did across the street to honor your father.
Yeah, thank you. We'll make it, we'll make it cool.
Was there a note in the comments from Jill about the number of bikes that could be parked at the bike rack?
Yes, to make sure of the number of them.
Yeah.
Well, how much can they pack in in the corner? I mean, that question comes to mind.
Yeah, we're starting to pack that corner.
It was two things, though. It was the number of bikes and also are they going to be secure? Like, if it's out there by Southfield Road, are they less secure than if the bike racks located on the property?
What's most important for the community? Yeah, right. What's going to serve the community best in that regard? Probably be a consideration.
I guess, I mean, you know, it's possible you could put a couple decorative bike racks out, you know, in the northeast corner and then have a more standard bike rack, you know, maybe in the back or, you know, something like that.
Or maybe associated with the, there was a landscape area adjacent to the cafe.
Right, right, next to where the large.
Yeah, which allows somebody, well, allows that, bikes and cars never a good idea in crossing paths, but also keeping the, you know, bike close to you as opposed to out in the corner. I don't know, I'm just thinking of ways to handle capacity and amenity that are flexible.
To your point was that if we could have the bike storage up in that northeast corner, then you're off your bike and you're walking, whereas like you just said, having people zipping around in a bike, you know, even though we're going to have that very, you know, well-designated walking path that comes from that area down to the cafe.
Still risky.
Do you want a bunch of folks on their bikes zipping around in that parking lot? You got to just.
Now we've slipped into amenities that are beyond, part of probably the planning, of site plan approval as opposed to is this a criteria upon which to hang the, you know, contingency of approving a PUD? So we should probably stick with those larger items that are critical. Not discounting that, just keeping it in mind.
Mark, you actually bring something up, because we were, again, we're traffic study, we've had feedback from the community, parking. One of the things I was wondering was the number of spaces given the capacity of the building. And that kind of leads to the building to the south. And then I started to think, well, there's no actual walkway for people that, that's actually closest to the building right there. How do they walk across that traffic? Because that's what I would do. I would actually park right on the other side of the street and it's literally five feet away from the building. And so I know that that's not connected to this, but it is once you actually go down this rabbit trail, because Mr. Serna's here.
You mean across Sunset, is what you're talking about?
No, no, I'm actually, I'm literally saying just south, the building just south, there's parking right there. But there's really no way to actually walk across. And it's actually the most logical spot.
There is, you turn an angle.
You have to go down.
Yeah.
Because those pavers on the wall aren't secured in the tip.
I don't think there is a wall there.
I think there is, I think there is.
There's a little rotating.
There's a little retaining wall.
There's a rotating.
The plan and the proposal includes a cut-through for traffic to move.
This is something to think about, just from a flow standpoint.
Yeah, I think I, I mean, I almost hesitated when they said, you know, car access. And I just thought that just becomes a, I don't know if you'd want to interconnect parking lots.
I was actually thinking for pedestrians.
Yeah, pedestrians, right.
I'm only thinking pedestrians right this.
Right, pedestrians on four, I think, my impression is it would get messy and just create more havoc if they were interconnected with auto traffic between.
Exactly.
Not that I wouldn't see necessarily the parking lot that was previously built on the property to the south as being, you know, an appropriate place for overflow parking if there needed to be overflow parking off of the site.
Right.
I mean, that makes logical sense.
That's proposed on their site plan.
Yep, and I don't foresee it as being a, I don't think that parking lot would get filled from that purpose from perspective of, you know, what does that do? If that parking lot got really busy, I don't know, I've had images of my mind as to whether that lot should be adjusted so that there's more buffer between it and Eldorado Place. But that's a, that'd be an issue, a separate issue from between for the city and.
Probably not for the community.
Yeah, not for this. No, it's not even associated with it because it's not part of this property. So I don't think we could put that in as a condition.
Right, but to answer your question, Mr. Fowles, there is the sidewalk that runs north to south, you know, on the east, you know, on the east elevation of all of those properties.
Out to the, out to the right-of-way.
Exactly, so there's sidewalk, you know, running all the way, you know, across all of those properties.
Across that way around.
So you could use that pedestrian sidewalk, but I do think that there's got, you know, there could be some kind of signage or some kind of, you know, you'd have to examine what kind of, you know, pedestrian striping or things like that that we could use to be able to make sure.
Sure. While you guys are here, I just might as well mention it.
Right, yeah, I know there's the issues of, you're crossing the traffic lane that's coming out of two lanes into one lane.
Exactly.
And people anxious to get on their way from that point, so, yeah.
I'm just thinking how residents think. And I'm not going to go in the lot, I'm just going to park right next to where the Kinko's is and walk across.
Right, now whether you want to walk onto oncoming, you know, I mean, that's what pedestrians, you know, would make sure to do that.
Well, yeah, there's the point, there's a point of encouraging traffic or, you know, and liability associated with it. I mean, as a property owner, I'd probably be concerned about that, so not to discourage, I like the concept.
I do think the traffic study, just like, you know, Mr. Tamorelli was saying about signage and wayfinding and, you know, those types of things are all going to have to be addressed, you know. Absolutely.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, Panera certainly wants it to be a safe site for their visitors and their customers. So I think taking all of that into account is very important for everybody involved.
Safeties are a number one issue. As an architect, that's your number one issue and then everything else falls after that, so. You know, whether you're inside the building or outside the building, you know, life safeties are a main concern.
Just a quick question for Jill or the planning commission. Is this the only opportunity, Jill, that planning will have to comment on the site plan? Because we're still going to have to get final, like, final site plan approval.
Correct.
So planning will have an opportunity.
Planning will have an opportunity.
I guess what I'm wondering.
Is there another public hearing? I mean, you mean like a?
Well, I'm just, I'm thinking of like action and just moving things forward. Obviously, you know, we want to make sure that this is, you know, addressing everything, things that are thought of tonight and things that are thought of in the future. But what I'm, you know, I'm trying, what I'm getting at is that if there's an opportunity for planning to go back and make more recommendations when we're actually getting into the site plan, I think that could allow us to start actually going through this, you know, addressing these points now and actually get a site plan, you know, to you guys in the future that could, you know, where we'd be able to get into the detail. That's why I'm hoping for tonight to actually move it forward.
Can you amend the PUD once it's approved?
I'm sorry?
Can you amend a PUD once it's approved?
No, I mean, yes, you can. But you'd have to go through the whole process again. So we don't want to do that. What we want to do is get all of the conditions that you can think of to city council so that they can be incorporated into the development agreement. I could envision, if you made a recommendation tonight, maybe say you make a positive recommendation tonight and it goes to the city council and looking at our little timeline, potentially going to city council on June 6th and then returning to approve the development agreement. You have another meeting in between those two city council meetings in which if you had additional findings, conditions for the development agreement specifically, not about the approval or disapproval of the PUD, that that could potentially happen then.
What a city.
We'd have to make the, the meeting on the 6th a special meeting, but that could easily be done.
Okay.
Would, could city councils come and say, see our list and say, hey, what about this? What about this?
Yes, absolutely. They could also look at your list and say.
We're not doing any of that stuff.
We're not doing any of that.
Or we're going to do a whole bunch of other stuff.
Right.
Or throw, would the process throw it back to us? I guess was going to be my follow-up, my next question.
They could, they could say, we don't think the planning commission thought this through clearly enough and we want to send it back for more comments.
Yeah, they would need our comments before just like saying, adding things to that list.
Right, they may say, in concept, we approve of this use and the way, the general way that it's laid out, but we'd like the planning commission to weigh in again and provide us with more specific conditions for the development agreement. That's a possibility also. Or they could look at your list and say, yeah, these are all good and we know what they're talking about.
Which would suggest that if there's conditions, we really have our heart set on, that we get them identified now and not necessarily rely on the opportunity for it to get pushed back or further to be feedback for us. I mean, opening, open to feedback if it's positive, but.
We need to get as much, as many of the requirements as we can think of to, like, outlined right now if we're going to approve, recommend approval right now.
Right.
And then, but understand that there may be opportunities for us to provide additional requirements that we would recommend the city council, including the development agreement. Because as Joe was saying, we have another meeting in between the two city council meetings where this would be considered.
Do we have any, are there any other ideas, requirements?
Do you want me to read you what you have so far?
Yes.
You have enhanced and heavy landscaping around the dumpster, enhanced landscaping along the Eldorado frontage with no additional parking expansion there. A traffic/parking study that will include looking at the driveways onto and from Southfield and Sunset Boulevard, including directional signage to support the findings. Specifications on drive-through speakers and evidence that noise will not intrude onto Eldorado. Public, work with the DDA to incorporate public art on site. Bike rack consistent with other racks, ensure multiple bikes can park safely and securely and accommodate pedestrian circulation from Sunset, this actually wasn't what you said, but I wrote it down, across the north driveway aisle from Sunset as well as from the property to the south. That's what I have so far.
We have a way to control queuing into the neighborhood amongst that? I mean, that starts to become an enforcement issue for.
Yeah, that's more, like, people are going to drive there and they're either going to get right through or they're going to queue up and if something's happening inside the restaurant that caused queuing to occur.
The condition is that all drive-through queuing shall occur on site.
Oh, that's a good one.
And they just have to figure out how to do it. Um, I think you might wanna include, even though they presented that the materials that they've shown you are what they're going to to use. To maybe make that, not necessarily like the specifications of it, but that it's the high quality. Um, the ample windows, the um higher quality brick, the current color scheme, or maybe consistent with the materials that were submitted with the concept.
Does it need to be in the P U D approval, wouldn't it be part of the site plan?
Yeah, I think the materials you wanna include that.
Materials are one of the things that have been put forth as a means of making the improvements contingent for.
Yeah, I guess to Sam's point, right, we wanna get as much to information about what the requirements will be so that it actually gets into the site plan they're gonna put in front of us for approval.
So materials consistent with the high quality um material submitted with the concept.
Oh, and we should probably touch with something else that you had commented on, which is the screening with reference to the roof and parapets and equipment screening on the roof. So that it is not, um, and I saw from any side. Landscaping.
That the dumpster is screened consistent with the building materials? Same material?
Say enforcement of maintenance of it. It's when things get, uh, I don't know, I know it. Leave the lid, leave the lid open, squirrels get in, there's a consideration there. Securing it is best, in the best manner possible.
An ordinance, they have ordinances for that.
Right, and we have ordinances for that, it's, it comes down to an enforcement issue and a practical day-to-day operation issue, so. I've had bagels driven in my backyard too. By squirrels, hanging in my trees. Where did they come from? Which, of course, you reminded me. They weren't Panera bagels from what I could see. I know my Panera bagels.
Prove that bagel was, but, yeah.
No, just so you reminded me of the one that I put on every single one, daily trash pickup.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that also can be a a condition of site plan review too, final site plan approval.
Anything else? Anything else anyone can think of that belongs on this list? Everything else starts to move and die, I started to think landscaping and getting into the details of that, but that's site plan. I'm not thinking of anything.
I can't think of anything else.
If we think we're ready, we can entertain a a motion to. Yeah, go ahead, Jason.
I only have part of a list. I need to see Jill's list, she's got the most comprehensive list. Can I see your list?
You can read my writing.
Uh, my writing's worse than yours, I guarantee you.
I just can read it for you.
You can just read it?
I'll read it, I'll start over again from the beginning. Uh, landscaping around the dumpster, they're not, I wish they, I will, I'll group them better next time, I guess.
That's a, a great one to start with.
And the dumpster should be screened with the same material as the building. Uh, enhanced screening in the El- Eldorado frontage and no parking allowed there. Uh, traffic parking study that looks at the exits and entrances from Southfield and Sunset Boulevard. As well as pedestrian circulation to and from the public sidewalk and the property to the south. Specifications on the drive-through speakers and evidence that noise will not intrude onto Eldorado. Uh, work with the D D A to incorporate public art onto the site. Bike racks, uh, make the bike rack consistent with the other rack across the street. Uh, ensure that multiple bikes can park safely and securely. All drive-through queuing shall occur on site. The materials should be consistent with the high quality materials presented with the initial, initial concept. Mechanical equipment should be screened from view consistent with the proposed building materials.
Okay, so I will make a motion to recommend approval of the planned unit development for two seven seven seven.
Or to to recommend approval to?
To the city council. Recommend approval to the city council of the pl- of planned unit development for two seven 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 Southfield Road, the Panera Fred uh project. Uh, including the, uh, in the development agreement, the requirements that Jill just outlined. That's my motion.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Okay.
Or done? Motion to recommend approval to city council.
Great. So, uh, normally all this stuff will be captured on Zoom, but we lost internet connection, Zoom's down, so I think it'll be really important that we get all this documentation to Kelda so she can make sure it's included.
Kelda's been listening.
But it's still being recorded, Jason. Still being recorded.
You have it recorded, right? Good, thank you.
It's, it's gonna be made available then, certainly.
Okay.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, everyone.
I have friends and relatives in the zone, so I know.
Thanks, Todd. But the the meeting's still in session.
Yeah, the meeting is, the meeting is still in session, it has not ended.
Everybody's laughing, but the meeting is still in session, we still have more.
I'm interested to, you know, if you had shock, you know, willing to, any thoughts you had to share afterwards, but I will, we'll have to continue on with the meeting at this point.
You can, you're welcome to.
Yeah, you're welcome to stay, sure. I just don't have it in front of me because it went off on me.
Capital improvement plan.
Capital improvement plan. It's the next item on the agenda. Jill, Jill just ran out to the restroom real quick. Okay, so.
So the agenda item is, uh.
We're obviously running long.
Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-seven capital improvement plan. And we have that document that Jill emailed all of us uh yesterday.
Yep.
Okay, we're ready for you.
Okay, great.
Capital improvement plan.
All right, we're onto the capital improvement plan. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to look at it despite our late date of sending it out. We have updated some of the years, uh, we had some inconsistencies last time, as you remember. Um, so those have been updated. Another one of the things that we added was within each, the beginning of each section, each department, a little note about um what was new in twenty twenty-two. I will note that with respect to D P W, um, I believe we had a backhoe and a pickup truck that were on the project list last year that didn't make it on this year and when we asked about, did they get purchased last year, if they hadn't, so we just added that, so that was another addition that you don't have, but it's on, um, it'll be on page eighteen.
That was an oversight that they should have included in their request.
They should have included in their request because they didn't buy it, so they're gonna, they have it on for next year.
Okay.
And so then each one, I think, and I did get some comments and questions yesterday, so thank you for those. I I don't wanna go into too much detail because it's.
My biggest question I have is where is the administrative section?
There wasn't any provided. So I don't know that there were any that rose to the level of being capital and pro- capital projects this year, anything over five thousand dollars?
Too busy to record.
Well, I I just, I know there was a discussion in the council meeting yesterday about purchasing a server for the television station. But maybe that's under the five thousand dollar limit, I don't know.
Could be, I haven't watched the council meeting yet.
And that can be added in.
Yeah.
Okay.
That is something that needs to be added.
Yeah, I just looked at, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So are we, we're ready for um recommendation of approval?
You actually approve this and then forward it to council?
Yeah, I just, Jill, I do that for real quick, small things, I just didn't get a chance to look at it until.
Okay, no, that's understandable, we just.
Yeah, um, pa- page thirteen, um, I think the total is wrong down there, it shows three million, but the amount above that, I don't think rises to anywhere near three million.
You're talking about for the D D A, excuse me?
For the project inventory on page thirteen.
Oh.
This page right here?
The only thing I'm thinking is if that's related to the alley.
Alley work?
Yeah, because those were ongoing.
Maybe the alleyway is not in, listed in in this, in the door.
It's here, alleyway improvements is here at two hundred fifty one.
Right, it's on there, but I think that was a repeating amount, so it may not have shown up properly.
One point six million total.
That's like a three-year project, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's about twenty twenty-five. It's, it's.
But even at one point six million, adding those other numbers, I don't, oh, maybe, well, yeah, we'd give about three million.
It's one point six, including the future years um that are included in that, so that, the number is correct.
And then on, on page fourteen, um, downward, it says, uh, sanitary and storm sewer.
Yes.
O, O two lists retention tank upgrades and then, um, uh, where was it? Then O six is retention grade repairs. I think the, I think the more descriptive on on O two would be the Evergreen Farmington, I think that's the Evergreen Farmington sewer project that we're on the hook for, for ten years, so I think a ten year, a twenty year, something like that. And then, uh.
Southfield? I don't know.
What's that?
Is that along with Southfield, is that tied into a project with Southfield or is that?
No, we're, we're part of the Ever, so all the communities that are part of the Evergreen Farmington, I just know them initially.
Oh, by name, okay.
Sanitary district.
District, yeah. Are are responsible for a portion of the upgrades that they're doing across the system and so I think ours is.
Based on how much, how much um infrastructure is in their community?
You said that somewhere in the details.
Or feeding into those, yeah.
Yeah, so that's what it is. I had one question on the, on the monument sign conversion on page twenty. Does our ordinance allow that?
No, it does not.
Yeah, so that was gonna require an ordinance change.
Or not.
Or.
Or a variance.
Or is, is that, is that a variance you wanna offer the city and then open up and say no to?
Right.
All I'll say about this though is that this is the, uh, this is the C I P.
Correct.
Not a approving of a project thing, this is just a wish list.
It's just a question, I didn't, I didn't.
I had the same question and, uh, I I think, I I think it's, it's so, it's fine if that's what the request is and it's okay to, I'd estimate the budget to potentially do it. It's a whole nother thing to actually uh apply for a variance to.
Sorry.
Get that done, order change the ordinance to support it.
Yeah, and then the last one, that's, that's not important, so.
What, what's the linkage between this and the budget? I mean, how are the years determined? And is this, you know, is there budget funding that gets identified, we're, you know, two million dollars to the good and we can use that for capital projects this year? I mean, how is that accomplished, sorry, maybe it's common knowledge, but I didn't.
Ideally, the first year of the C I P becomes the operating budget for the city for the following year.
Right.
But that depends on what happens when it gets to the council.
Right, during our, during our budget discussion.
Blind line items.
Yeah, so for example, last year, I think we were planning on doing it all. And then, you know, with all the, the COVID cuts and lack of revenue, we cut a few things off of it to, to look down.
So we say, here's seventeen projects for twenty twenty-two, twenty for twenty twenty-three and so on. Council then looks and says, okay, we have an appetite for thirteen of these or this much money, next year we'll see. So we make a recommendation based on input from the various departments. Council then looks at the numbers.
A good example is this backhoe that D P S didn't buy.
Right.
So it's next year.
Right, and so, so next year we'll do this again.
Right.
And we'll make adjustments and then that'll, that year one of next year's plan will be what council will consider for that year.
So I heard that last night on the council, you know, wishlist, which really is a whole, it's an unfortunate use of terms, I think that's not a good way to do it. But in something like the backhoe, is there a structured cost benefit analysis? Is there a rental that we rent a backhoe for a year and it costs this much? And, I mean, how is that determined by council whether something should be a purchase or, you know?
It, it can be a little of both, I mean, if it's, you know, I mean, coun- council could have a discussion about, say, the backhoe and say, well, is there another way we can do this rather than purchasing one that might be cheaper? You know, so can we rent one in, you know, by not owning it, will that save us money? So it's, it's a, it's an individual discussion on each, each item.
I was gonna say, so that, that would be an example of the, the entity, government entity that has put in that request or that budget item would have to substantiate and support it and convince city council why it's critical, right.
Would, would that make more sense for that to be provided to us so that council doesn't?
Typically is, it often is, I would say.
I didn't see any backup.
You probably didn't see that this time, but.
Okay. Normally, there's backup justification.
I think there's just been a lot.
I mean, above us, sir, I'm not saying for a five thousand dollar.
There have been instances in the past where, where the departments, there's a meeting before where the departments come in and and state their case and walk us through.
Okay.
And the reasoning behind it.
Okay.
Um, it doesn't happen all the time that way and I, I would suspect it's been related to um city budget deadlines.
Budget and staffing situation, so it's been a challenging time, I think, the last couple of years have been challenging.
For a variety of.
But we always say, we're gonna just do it a little bit earlier next year and so we'll ho- hopefully start working on it in maybe October.
So we don't have a standard, like, the C I P starts at five thousand, there isn't a standard hurdle for some sort of justification for an ex- uh expenditure above another dollar amount. It's sort of done department by department, they explain what it's for and have either a verbal description or a more rigorous cost benefit review.
So, um, the process should include, uh, the, the team of people that are assembling the C I P, so all the department heads. And in the past, we've had at least two members from the planning commission participate in that as well, so they're sort of your liaison, if you will, to the C I P team. Where then we go through each one and people do have to say, well, you know, the dump truck is ten years old and we've repaired it three times and we've looked into leasing, it's just not feasible, we have to do this. And to do it, if we do, if we get the new one, now we've got an extra, it comes with an extra, I don't know, dumper and you can get more, twice as much done.
That's good.
And a lot of times, these things have been on the list for so long that, that when its term comes up, it's kind of a no-brainer. A lot of times, not every time.
So knowing the process, I'm suspecting the process is that some of these requests have to get in in advance so that when they absolutely are needed, they're, they've, they're not a sudden surprise that isn't been on the radar and or on the horizon for a while so that it can be. Yeah, accommodated, so.
Makes sense.
So we're looking for a motion, I think? Yeah.
Well, I, I just wanted, there was, there was some discussion in the city council meeting last night about, um, the, uh, under the police requests. Uh, item was this twenty-two dash zero eight, which is new police vehicles. So, um, warranted, they're, they're not cheap, but it's, it is warranted.
Not getting cheaper.
And it's expected, it's planned to be, um, purchased this year. So, um, it's a big expense, but it's an important expense, I think, for the police department, so I'm glad to see that that's on there. And then on page seventeen, there's a, this also came up last night. D P S twenty-two dash twelve, which is about improvements to the community room, cause there's water damage to the ceiling in the community room. So that's also something that's important and needs to be addressed. So I'm glad to see those things on there, but aren't there, uh, multiple community room improvements over the coming years? I don't think, I, I think that was the only one I saw on here was, um.
There was the roof.
D P S twenty-two dash twelve.
Previously.
Roof leaks in several areas in the community room.
Which, which, which would necessitate at least some level of repair in the community room.
Oh, here it is, okay, so there's the ceiling repair in the community room because of the roof leaks and then there's, like I said, it's called. And then there's, like I said, it's called city hall roof repair. And then there's item D P S twenty-two dash fifteen, which is on page eighteen of the packet, which is, oh, that's the D P S building. It's a separate thing, so there aren't multiple repairs that are needed for the city hall based on roof leaks.
They asked the question about that one.
Twenty thousand dollars includes the.
I guess we'll find out next year if more is needed, okay, cool. So I will make a recommendation that the planning commission approve the capital improvement plan for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Mark, I'll make a comment just before we move on. One of the things I always look at in the plan is not so much the maintenance items, but the urban planning items. And that's, those were kind of where my focus of questions were. Because, you know, city council's blocking and tackling when it comes to maintenance and understanding those priorities. But one of the things I always think about as city planners is where are we going into the future? What's connecting our neighborhoods? We are four quadrants and we are separate just because of a big highway and a big road. And so those are the things that I like to highlight because I think that some, you know, we're in zoning, we talk about all kind of different stuff. But where are we going from an urban planning standpoint? You know, and that's what I highlight every time I look at the C I P is.
And I think that connectedness in the past has been, well, I think the easy one was like bike paths and, and the bike routes, which kind of finally came to fruition. If I'm not remembering correctly, not from a budgetary stance, but from a grant that it needed to have happened, which.
Well, like the beacons was one of my, was one of my things on there, the Hawk.
The Hawk crossings, yeah, the Hawk crossings and the three E V charging stations, I think, also are.
So there's a connectivity, because that's actually saying there's momentum with that. So that's just a side comment, we can get back to business.
It's a great comment and it's actually one of the things that we were talking about doing to make it better for next year is to really make those more prominent, those connections.
The more strategic kind of.
Yeah, like, oh, by the way, here's the goals of your master plan, here's the goals of our creation plan.
Oh.
And here's the items that address those in some way. Yeah, like we should be more clear about that.
Okay.
So we'll move on to old business and tabled items. I'm not sure when we last spoke about front yard and impervious.
I saw that it was listed as old business and a tabled item and I agree with you because I don't remember what we talked about. I do, I do know, we did talk about the parking in the front yard.
I think this came from a discussion with Susie and I.
Yeah, so I think it is, it came from the street repairs and the ditch improvements. And once we're making those ditch improvements again, are we going to let people put parking back over the new?
Yeah, yeah.
It's just basically that whole discussion about, and it was like circular driveways in the right of way. Parking pads, for example, we just, we just had a resident.
Yeah, I saw that, see click fix?
It was basically extended their concrete pad in front of their house and then, and then where that ended, put gravel on there. And they're probably going to have to rip the whole thing up because they didn't do, they didn't pull permit and they, there's no culvert underneath there.
Oh.
So I was wondering whether they just laid, filled it all with gravel and thought they'd be good.
Yeah.
They dug six inches down and did a little.
Six inches down is not down for drainage.
Yeah, so I actually just received a whole file on that today for, that Susie and I have to talk about that a little bit more.
I thought.
So this, yeah, this was really just a reintroduction of the, of the topic. And the question to you, do you think it's appropriate, appropriate to have, you know, more than one driveway of a certain width? And or do we want to talk about impervious surface coverage, which we don't really regulate now? That does tie in with other goals we have.
I think it's, in the context of before, I don't know if there's larger entities which require us or will soon require us to start enforcing, you know, permeable surface on, on residential lots. But I think it's a valid consideration about, start looking at, you know, are there limitations or should there be limitations on the amount of, of hard surface based on lot size?
So we can come back next month with.
I mean, that, that might be an oversimplification, but, and I, and I know there's challenges sometimes with, with off-street parking in the residential area, but.
Yeah, and it's probably good to have Susie in there in this because, you know, she's got a lot of the background. And that leads into a whole nother discussion about encroachments because a lot of these parking pads and circular driveways don't have encroachment licenses. They just built them, a lot of them were done without permits, so.
Well, if we're going to be improving all the streets in the city, or at least seven miles of them, right? And now you've got this impervious pad next to it, which is causing more water to flow onto the street, which is degrading it faster, like then maybe there needs to be consideration of require, like ordinance to require drainage from that impervious pad if it is going to be approved within the ordinance.
Well, I think, I think right now, what we're saying too is that if, if it has to be ripped up as part of the, you know, doing, doing a road, we're not putting it back.
I was going to say.
We're, we're putting it back as green space.
Commercially, there's standards, I mean, as far as runoff or offflow from sites, I don't know how well that could be an aspect. I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's even the mitigation possibility of doing that on a residential property given the size of limitations associated with it. I throw it out there, but it's like, okay.
I mean, you can pitch the impervious pad to certain, so it drains into the storm ditch, right?
Well, it's interesting.
Well, you can drain, but, but it's the rate. It's the rate at which water flows through your system and the amount you're collecting and how quickly it moves, which is why they disconnected storm, your, your roofs directly. They want that water to flow across your site and get absorbed as opposed to rapidly being sent to the rivers, which then causes erosion and.
It's interesting you say that because one of the things that the infrastructure committee looked at, I always feel like I'm leaving you out.
No, 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 you're fine.
One of the things the infrastructure committee talked about, this is going to talk to Jill. And we, we had a couple of presentations and we looked into it, we kind of tabled it for another day. But there's, a lot of cities are starting to tax the storm water because the storm, the storm system is something that we, we as a city have to pay for, but we collect no revenue for it. So there's a way of looking at each particular lot and looking at the pervious versus impervious area and taxing the, the, each individual household based upon how much impervious area they have percentage wise. And so it, it's interesting, it's an interesting concept. I mean, it's not a huge tax, but it raises enough money to, to maintain the, the, the storm sewer, but we kind of put that aside.
Well, we do collect it through the water bill. I mean, it's not a tax, it's, it's a willing payment of the sewer through the water bill.
Yeah, well, but in terms of like, I, I don't remember all the details, but in terms of like the legality of, of being able to have the authority to do that, it's, it's technically a tax, but, yeah.
There's also the whole visual pollution aspect of six, seven, eight, ten. I mean, we all know the houses in our community where there's four, six, eight.
So many cars.
Ten cars sitting out in front of the house. I don't know, I mean, is that the community we have? Is that, how, you know, how do we protect ourselves from that? These pads get extended circular driveways, all of a sudden you have room for eight cars to sit out every night throughout the day? I don't know, that's just a.
What was funny, one of the things I was looking at is like, I know with like M I S T A and I just got back from Wisconsin and we're talking about affordable housing and some of the rate, Wisconsin's ahead of us in this respect. Looking at impervious services and some of the language was very intriguing of how they're actually kind of structuring that from a state standpoint. And then obviously, as you dial down into the municipal standpoint, there's probably some best practices that can be looked at as precedent for how to actually look at that impervious space, what can be done? And I, I'd want some recommendations of some things that, you know, maybe Giffords has seen that would actually give us some language to kind of go on and, because you don't know what you don't know. And I was, I was dealing with a big affordable housing site and it was the same thing. It was like, oh, wow, look at what they're doing out in this other state.
Well, the interesting thing that I add to this is I, I, it seems to me every, you know, permeable paver system that I see get installed does not last very long. They don't hold up or there's systems that end up being not maintained well or they hold weeds or they.
Right, we had a nightmare with the one across the street.
Street, yes, as an example.
We want them to work, but they don't work as well here.
I watched the, the parking lot, which looked beautiful at Carpenter Lake and Southfield, the, the nature area, and the pavers are crumbling. And so I know there's the investment in putting those down is, gotta be more expensive than paving with concrete. And I, I know the concept, it just, it's got to be more.
Well, that's where I guess.
We want something durable that's going to work if it's going to be implemented as opposed to just saying, no, you know. And then, and then it's the Wild West in terms of what gets installed and what condition it stays in and, you know, what does that do for the appearance of the community as well, so. I know what they used to, what, just put the two strips, the driveways when they were just the two strips. And I guess they didn't care if your oil leaked and it hit, hit the lawn. I mean, there's another, a whole nother issue, probably pointed discussion there, but.
Well, it's just gotten more serious now just because we are in a middle of a road project and we want that investment to last. And so now, now I'm really starting to look at, okay, impermeable surfaces, my wife and I were just discussing it. What are we doing about that? You know, long-term thinking, like what are we, what can we set in motion that's long-term so that we're not actually, you know, losing years just because there's water that's actually degrading things, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
And so I, I would love to understand what other cities are doing that, just, just as a basis. Because to your point, materials right now, most of them don't last. I was talking to an architecture firm, I was with Rosetti, and they were trying to pitch me on it does work and I, they could prove it. But I, I, I know that there's issues.
I'm just going by observation, I'm not going, it's my own, I mean, as an architect, I, I, I haven't, you know, seen it and I'm certainly, it's promoted and it, and it had, it has our goals in mind and, and credits to be gained by doing those, those things towards, you know, recognized as sustainable or green or a variety of categories.
Well, it's all about scale too, right? So we're talking about residential areas, so you can only do so much. And so that's why I think maybe if we had some, some language of what residential areas have done. I mean, it's totally different, obviously, when you're talking about commercial, a large footprint. That would help maybe our thinking or ideas or discussion.
And I think there's, taking it back off, because this is coming to mind in front of my house and I, and I don't remember exactly when our road was repaved. But it, it, we've been in the neighborhood long enough for it to have benefited or benefited. We, you know, obviously paid toward it, getting the road paved. But spring is a bad time and, spring is a bad time and I say this because we have visitors. We have people come, we have a party, people park on the road, they park, they want to be off the road, so they're on the edge and the edges of the roads are getting broken up. And, or the ditches beyond them are getting disfigured and it's a major work for, I mean, there are guests, I know. But they're, yeah, they pull off onto the lawn, sink five, six inches and now there's a major repair. And it's destabilizing the road itself because there's no edge and, and I know this is.
Or there's a gas main project, they come and they tear up your front yard and install a new gas main.
Or water main connection, you know, that's getting into infrastructure and.
So Mark, did you say curbs?
Isn't this all though having to do with wastewater, not wastewater, sewage.
Stormwater?
Stormwater outflow. And I think, I think that's the big question. I mean, there is the, the urban questions you're bringing up, but I think from a, a day to day with our residents, thinking about our residents and I'm really into the water and I've started looking at the sewer stuff. I mean, there's a lot of money we pay. It's what, probably 10% of our city budget? You know, what is our master plan for reducing storm water outflow? And, you know, you look at communities like Birmingham, they have a much lower rate with the Evergreen Farmington Sewer District than we have Southfield, same thing. I mean, there's, there's something we should be able to do longer term to encourage residents. One, by informing them why these changes will help them in the long run, but also maybe encourage disconnection of their, what's the perimeter drain? You know, those drains, most people's homes, the drains are still connected, the downspouts aren't. But, you know, I was told that lots of water goes through those drains from our house out to the street.
Because they're permeable?
Yeah.
Because the drain tiles themselves are permeable.
Because there's water that drops by the house, that the drain tiles have deteriorated.
Yeah, and that's why they have the five-foot extension rule on the, on the gutter downspouts.
So, you know, can we encourage residents with something to disconnect that, that weeping tile from going out to the sewer? I don't know, there's a lot of.
That's an expense, I'm sure.
About ten grand.
Yeah. To, to excavate or.
I mean, that's, to me, the bigger thing is storm water outflow. It's all about impermeable surfaces.
Right.
And the water sitting and going.
Well, in a community like ours, we don't have a lot of open space that could be dedicated towards, okay, could, could you gather it? And I don't know if that's a solution that's being incorporated in any newly developing communities where they say, okay, well, if here's the lowland, it's an obvious location for retention, retention basin.
Where they have that, sure.
Yeah, and they become natural water features, which.
Right, they can.
Which are pretty, and people like them.
They can be, they can be, they're.
I like to cite my, my in-laws when they, one street subdivision had to put up north in the sand, had to put in a retention basin, you won't find a spot of water collecting in any of them. But the rules dictate such, yeah, so.
All right, well, we'll bring you back a little research, maybe some examples. And I think probably starting with, if we can, maybe some little project areas in the city. If we can estimate what the current impervious surface is, that kind of helps you see. Because we don't want to necessarily create something that's totally out of sync with the existing development, make everybody non-conforming and.
So this is another homework project, go walk the neighborhoods and take pictures of the cement beds in front of people's houses?
Cement beds?
Good idea.
That's, that's a hot topic right now.
Yeah, good, awesome.
I think that company that I talked about does that, you know, with, with their setting up the tax base. They, you satellite imagery to figure out what percentage of your property.
We actually did that for one of our other communities where we looked at a couple of different streets and just to get an idea for, you know, how much, how big the lots were and how much, you know, they had a garage, a house and a driveway if we could tell before we made the regulations, because they wanted to know what was going to happen to their residents.
When they find out the property line isn't where they think it is.
It's just rough, it's not, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Other matters for discussion? I think we almost maybe bled into the.
Yeah.
Anything?
I have just one thing, if you don't mind. Tomorrow is the Michigan Association of Planning Spring Summit. Are you going to be there? Really? Awesome. I'm moderating a session at three o'clock.
I, I won't be there because my son's prom, so I gotta drive back and leave.
Well, you're going to miss, I get to.
The cool part, you'll just say.
I get to show a couple of slides at the beginning before the speakers do their whole thing. And I, my, my introductory remarks for the session, which is called something like Innovation in the Trenches and it's a community development director from East Lansing and the interim city manager from Muskegon talking about different projects that they have in their communities and how they're adding more housing. And so to kind of tee up the conversation, talking about how long we've been talking about housing and examples. I'm showing a couple of examples from some of the recent master plans. And one of my examples is the House in the Wood site, which I know is controversial and, you know, may not actually even come to fruition. But the reason I'm talking about it is because I think it was really an important component for the planning commission to include in the master plan. And even when council expressed displeasure with that, the planning commissions discussed it and said, no, we think this is worth including in the, in the plan. And that's sort of the idea about, you know, being leaders in your community, so.
Great, cool to share.
I think it's a big battle over aesthetics on, on that, that particular issue.
It was a discussion.
To potentially be had, you know, what, how to, how to do it and how to do it so it fits into a community that, you know.
Right, right, and that, that's all the details that can be worked out. But big picture, you're thinking, we can add more housing here on this site in a way that can be complimentary to the neighborhood and can provide that, we had that idea of the usable open space in the middle, so. That's all I have.
I guess other than, I did have one comment, I was at a solar reading. The MAPS had a meeting for solar. I signed up for it, we're going to take a tour of different solar sites, blah, blah, blah.
This is like generation or, or just, you know?
Yeah, it was solar generation for basically, and it was from a zoning planning commissions type standpoint. So language, from a municipality standpoint, personal, and then obviously went to do all the utility grade and you had like Emmett County. and you had like Emmett County, that was there talking about their land and how they could utilize it.
Open land.
Right, right, right.
As opposed to where we started to go down the path of discussing, yeah, how do we accommodate solar generation on residential properties in an established community and.
And I can send you the slides because it was really cool just because of the language that they used. They had some sample language just to get prepared because at all different levels, whether residential, um, smaller plots of land that are not residential-ish, and then you had municipalities, uh, looking, again, roofing different on the ground. And just some best practices, it was put on by Michigan State, U, uh, U of M and a MAPS. And so it was, it was definitely worthwhile just to kind of understand what the landscape was from a language standpoint. And cities, how can we prepare, because that's what things are doing.
Yeah.
And, and even some utility type things for solar, it doesn't have to be like a solar panel on my roof. It could be something like, okay, my EV charger has a solar thing and it's actually getting two megawatts for, or actually, that's not, that's not true. A fraction of a mega, a megawatt.
Vehicles are actually being able to provide some backup or emergency power for your residents.
Yeah, so, so how does the grid work? How does that work?
Yeah.
You know, things like that. So it was, it was a good conversation, I can send those slides to you.
And we're, it's really interesting to see how, um, different communities are wanting to address it. We just worked with the Village of Bingham Farms to develop a solar panel ordinance. I never thought, if you would ask me that a couple of years ago, I'd be like, no, they're not ever gonna do that.
Place you'd be doing it for?
Yeah, they, the planning commission is really excited about it. And, yeah, it's good.
No, it didn't surprise me at all.
It didn't surprise you that they were working on it?
No, no, Bingham Farms is pretty progressive, we were gonna build a house, Bingham Farms. So, yeah, there's a lot of stuff you can do that they want, a lot of high-tech and stuff. It's really nice.
They wanna be, you know.
They're a lot more further ahead for a small community than some other small communities.
They are, um, very concerned about aesthetics though. And so that I thought would be the sticking point where they would say, no, no.
No panels.
Uh, no, but.
Probably why they want to do it.
The planning commissioners had them.
Because they wanna be there, see, this is how you can manage this in, in a manner that's not going to be objectionable to your neighbors who aren't so on board.
And I think more people are just seeing them and so it doesn't seem as scary.
More normal, I would think. I think, I mean, I mean, going back to the seventies, I think when they were like first thought of and you thought, oh, that's an odd thing. I wouldn't want, but, but they were not everywhere. They're not, they're not perceived as being, and, and now there's certainly a lot more.
They were more reflective too and now they're less reflective and there's less glare coming off of them, so.
Actually, the glare's on the bottom side.
Yeah.
Now when it snows, you can actually get energy that reflects off the snow.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're saying that Michigan actually is surprisingly one of the places that solar works better because it doesn't get super, super hot too.
It's a, what, if you take Phoenix, Michigan's at like 75% of what Phoenix would get. So, so a lot of people think that we're not in like a green zone for solar, but we actually are.
Yeah, we, they, notoriously known for lack of sunshine, especially in winter. Or even into spring this year for a period of time until this latest threat.
Up until it was summer last weekend?
Until the summer last, you were correct. We had an earlier summer too.
We did.
Just a stint.
Always go, yeah.
But it was, yeah, not.
Was not sustainable.
Not sunny summer. So, okay.
Good, thank you.
All right, um, general communication, we said that, okay? Susie's not here.
Susie's not here, Calda anything to share?
So it'll be next time, so I'll motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.